Good evening again, everyone, or good afternoon. It's a special meeting, closed session for the City of Pacific Grove City Council. It's Wednesday, February 3rd, 2021. It's now 4:30 PM. And I'll ask our city clerk, Ms. Kendell, would you please give us a roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor Peak?
Here.
Councilmember Emilio?
Here.
Councilmember Coletti?
Here.
Councilmember McAdams?
Here.
Councilmember Peduri?
Here.
Councilmember Smith? And Councilmember Tomlinson? All are present with the exception of Councilmember Smith at the moment.
I suspect he will be joining us very shortly. Do we have any members of the public? I'm not seeing any for public comment.
I do not see any as well.
Right. Well, what we have on our agenda for this afternoon are two items. The first one is conference with labor negotiators. And this, our city negotiators are Ben Harvey and Tori Hannah, and Letitia Libian and Donna Williams. And the employee organization is the Police Officers Association. And the second item is conference with real property negotiators portions of Sloane Avenue and Ocean View Boulevard. And our city negotiators are Ben Harvey and David Laredo negotiating with Deborah Geiler and Mike Zimmerman under negotiation price and terms of payment. And I see Councilmember Smith has just joined us.
I do as well. Do you still hear me, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to leave the meeting. I believe I've made Mr. Harvey hope. I seem to be having an issue with my computer, though, so my apologies. I may just need to shut down.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we've got.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Apologies for starting later than advertised, our closed session, which we started at 4:30, ran till 6:15. But we're starting now. Welcome, everyone. It's a regular meeting of Pacific Grove City Council. It's Wednesday, February 3rd, 2021, at 6:31. And I'll ask our city clerk, Ms. Kendell, would you please give us a roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Tomlinson?
Present.
Councilmember Smith? Councilmember Peduri?
Here.
Councilmember McAdams?
Here.
Councilmember Coletti?
Here.
Councilmember Emilio?
Here.
Mayor Peak?
Here.
And Councilmember Smith is not present yet.
I'm sure he'll join us in just a moment as he was in closed session. Now I'll ask Councilmember Coletti to please lead us in pledge of allegiance.
Yes, sir, your honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now turn to approval of the agenda. I recommend that the last item on the agenda, item 14A, environmental impact review presentation be continued to our next regular meeting. And staff has asked that two items on the consent agenda, item 9B, HR and associates contract extension, and 9D, which is the 3CE, Community Energy MOU, be also continued to the next regular session. And with that, I'll entertain Councilmember Emilio.
I would like to move an agenda item right after the emergency. I believe it's 9A. I'd like to move 13E, dealing with the small, the concept of small business grants, to after the emergency, 9, I think it's 9A.
All right. Any other recommendations for amending the agenda? Councilmember Emilio, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda as stated. And with the items moved, I'll make a motion for that.
Second.
May we have a vote, please, Ms. Kendell?
Thank you. For clarification, was that Councilmember McAdams who seconded?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Peduri?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Thank you. We'll now go to council and staff announcements. We'll turn to our city attorney, Mr. Laredo.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public and staff. The council did meet at 4:30 for a closed session. There were two items on the agenda. The first was dealing with labor negotiations concerning the Police Officers Association. Negotiators are Ben Harvey, Tori Hannah, Letitia Libian, and Donna Williamson. The council did consider bargaining goals for the city, did discuss the role of the bargaining team, the role of the city council, and to discuss the legal process going forward. There was some general direction turning with respect to the scope of authority to be discussed at the table, but no specific reportable action was taken on that matter. Council, and the second item did discuss real property negotiations concerning the price and terms of Sloane Avenue and Ocean View Boulevard rights of way concerning the American Did Canary proposed development site. Mr. Harvey and myself were negotiators discussing this with the city council. The, in closed session, the council discussed the status in negotiations, did review alternate proposals, and did provide general direction to the, your negotiators to draft a lease option with the stipulation that that be brought back for review in open session and public discussion at a future meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Harvey, do we have any staff announcements?
Thank you, Mayor. We have one. I would like to turn it over to Chief Madalone so that we may introduce Commander David Santos to the council and the community.
Hi there. Can you see me and hear me?
Yes.
All right, good. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city staff, and members of the public. It is my great honor to introduce, and hopefully he has his video on, Commander David Santos. He's joined us, his first day was last Monday, the 25th. He's been with us for a week and a few days now, and he's hitting the ground running. He came to us from San Jose, and I'll let him just say a few words about his history and what he looks forward to doing here in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Madalone. Hello to everyone, council, Mr. Mayor. I'm just excited to be here. I retired from the San Jose Police Department on January 23rd after nearly 26 years, and I started my, my next chapter of my career on January 25th with the Pacific Grove Police Department. I'm just very excited to be here and take on this new role. And I just want to tell you all that I am just going to find ways that I can work to make the department better and the city better, and, and anything I can do in that, in that line.
Thank you. Any other staff announcements?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Hey. We'll go to council members for announcements. Councilmember Pedori?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank and recognize Public Works. There were, there was a lot of storms last week, and the next day it was almost like everything was back to normal. So I really appreciate what they're doing for the community. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Emilio?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Peduri took a little steam out. I was going to talk about Public Works too. And, but a couple of things. I wanted to mention, I talked maybe three or four council, two council meetings ago about recognizing those that have perished during the COVID incident. And I wanted you to know that myself and Mo at the Pacific Grove Chamber of Commerce is having a special event at Lover's Point. There'll be approximately 300, believe it or not, 300, close to 300 deaths in Monterey County to recognize all of those. The flags will be displayed from Wednesday, February 17th, through Monday, February 22nd. And on Friday, there'll be interfaith prayer at 10:00 AM at Lover's Point. And like I said, it'll be approximately 300 flags planted in rows on the grassy areas of Lover's Point. And just wanted to share that. I also wanted to share that, welcome, if he's still on, the commander for working with us in, at the City of Pacific Grove. I also wanted to mention that I had a conversation with the Pacific Grove POA, just information confirmation. It was real information, and it was, they were very professional, and provided, exchanged some information, and it was very, very professional. I just wanted to add that on with the Pacific Grove PD. That's all.
Councilmember McAdams?
Thank you, Mayor. February is African-American History Month, also known as Black History Month. The theme for 2021 is the Black Family, Representation, Identity, and Diversity. For Pacific Grove, the first Baptist church, which is located on Laurel and Sixth Street, became the mother church of the Monterey Peninsula Baptist Community back in 1909. And then later, in February of 1927, the first chapter of the NAACP in the Monterey region was formed at that very church here in Pacific Grove. If you wanted more information about Black History Month, you can go online to www.asalh.org. Thank you.
And I have some, let's see, oh, some upcoming meetings next week. On Wednesday, February 10th at 6:00 PM, the city council will have a goal-setting session. Goals for the 20, 2021 and 2022. So it's a two-year. And that, so tune into that. Also, some committee meetings happening next week. I see on the city website, on the calendar, the Architectural Review Board's meeting on February 9th at 3:00 PM. And then I think I'm going to ask the city clerk to perhaps if she could confirm this, but I've got three other city committees that didn't make the city calendar, and they're meeting next week. The Economic Development Commission meeting on February 11th at 4:00 PM. The Museum Board meeting on February 9th at 5:00 PM. And the Planning Commission meeting February 11th at 6:00 PM. Are those, I got that off of agendas, but I didn't see it on the calendar. Or do you have any confirmation?
I am not, no, I don't have any confirmation, but I can certainly check with staff on those. I can, I can review, and maybe on the break I can come back with some information, but I don't have any confirmation at this time.
Okay, all right. Confirmation would be great. And that brings us to general public comments. And I see we've got a couple of virtual hands raised, so welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Peter Mount here, you have the floor.
You could start the timer, please.
Good evening and thank you for your service. Peter Mount here with the Pacific Grove Chamber of Commerce here. Just wanted to highlight a recent effort by your chamber to support Pacific Grove Restaurants during the most recent shutdown order. The chamber developed a coupon program in November to entice more spending at restaurants by locals and visitors. The chamber designed, printed, and distributed coupons offering diners $10 off of their meals at 36 participating restaurants in Pacific Grove. These were also mailed to 9,000 homes and PO boxes in town and printed several times in local newspapers. We distributed them to nine retailers and 23 hotel and lodging establishments around the holidays to cross-promote. Restaurants were instructed to collect and return each coupon redeemed for 100% reimbursement following the conclusion of the program, which ran from November 23rd to January 11th of this year. All checks were cut and distributed by the chamber on Friday, January 15th. The total number of coupons turned in by restaurants was 4,357, and the chamber paid out $43,570 to participating restaurants. Based on feedback from restaurateurs, each coupon worth $10 generated an average of $30 in sales. They excluded tax, alcohol, and gratuity. So with gratuity, the estimated economic impact of the promotion was $145,000. These numbers way exceeded our expectations, and those of the participating restaurants. And while this was a huge success, and we're really proud of it, now that it's over, we, we look, look forward to the next quarter and anticipate future pandemic conditions. Valentine's Day is coming up, and PG has an excellent florist, Fiona Floral Downtown, and we encourage everyone to continue to support their local restaurants and retailers, a number of whom are offering specials that weekend, including Artisanic Gallery and Maritas, The Quill, and a couple others. We hope everyone watching will be as supportive as they can in the next few months. And like you, we remain committed to the success of Pacific Grove. Thank you.
Jennifer Carson, you have the floor.
Welcome. If you could please start the clock.
I'm sorry, Ms. Carson, you don't have a good connection. We cannot hear you.
Ms. Carson, if you can hear us, please call into our helpline. The, the phone number is on the top of the agenda. I think it's 648-3128.
Thank you, Mayor. Zoe Shouts, you have the floor.
Hi there. I want to come to the council this evening to discuss the issue of the officer that was recently fired for his affiliation with the Three Percenters, among other hate speech. The city has come under intense scrutiny, scrutiny over the handling of this officer. Though he's been fired, no statements about this incident have been made as to how it will shape the future of Pacific Grove. I hope his, his situation brings light to the potential corruption and definitely the cover-up, especially with regards to the chief's handling of this issue and the council's silence on this issue. It's all very frightening. I hope that the budget for this next calendar year will be reviewed with this in mind, and that we do not allocate one more dollar to PGPD in light of this incident until we get more answers. And also that negotiations with the Police Officers Association look to eliminate immunity for the officer in any new contracts. I want to reduce the spending in the Pacific Grove Police Department and increase spending for programs like the library and the recreation. Thank you.
Al Shouts, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to kind of reiterate a point that Zoe alluded to. I'm a little concerned about the police union contract that comes up in June, and we haven't heard much about that. I appreciate that you guys are giving it so much consideration and devoting closed session time to it. I know you guys are working hard, 4:30, and you'll probably be going late as well. I just ask that you kind of bring us along on that, maybe a little, request a little bit more transparency for the public and the citizens who are definitely the ones who are affected probably the most by this contract. As far, I mean, I don't want to tell you what to negotiate, but I mean, just from, from what I've seen, you know, going on across the country, it seems that, you know, transparency is a problem. I would ask that, that, you know, only the financials be negotiated in this, in the contracts or whatever new contracts negotiated, it's just, just financials and, and the disciplinary issues. That needs to be administrative rather than contractual. It seems like you guys ran into a lot of problems with that, and that really hams from you and your efforts to deal with the militia-affiliated officer that, that's been such a big issue as of late. Again, I'm sure you guys know more about it than I do. There's, it's a closed session thing going on behind closed doors. I would ask that maybe, you know, you inform and educate us, the citizens, a little bit better and more about what's going on in those negotiations, what they consider this of, what you're negotiating, what your objectives are, things like that. I mean, it's, 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 it seems like, seems like there, there definitely need to be adjustments made in that regard, just from what we saw with, with, with what, what went on this past year. And other than that, yeah, I don't, I only have 55 seconds, so I can't, I don't want to launch into a whole nother subject, but just, just my recommendation is that people that I've talked to, bring us along, include us on, on what's going on there with those negotiations. Press for, for disciplinary issues to be administrative rather than contractual, just negotiate financials with them. We don't, we don't need, we need to, a lot of us feel that we need to be protected from police, that the police don't need to be protected from us, and that's what the unions are, are all about, just protecting the police from us. And I don't think that that's necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Norma, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I listened to Mayor Peak's State of the City address on January 27th. He asked the question, what will you do to reflect the 12 city values? So I looked them up on the city's website. They are accountability, transparency, honesty, integrity, respect, diversity, inclusiveness, responsibility, constructive dialogue, community involvement, resource stewardship, and lastly, continuous learning and improvement. These are all worthy values that we can all endorse. He also talked about setting goals for the city with public input. So I looked at the results of the recent city survey for ideas from the community. I encourage you all to read these public comments from the survey. Concerned citizens put a lot of thought into their responses, thinking it would make a difference. After all, constructive dialogue and community involvement are number nine and 10 of the 12 city values. However, somehow the real results were not presented. Is this the work of Cold Pro Media? Did this public relations firm cherry pick the survey results? Do we really need to spend $34,000 to, for this public relations firm to be lied to? The city agreed to a six-month trial period with this PR firm. To me, the possible manipulation of this city survey by, by Cold Pro Media is not the best use of public funds, and for the city to go along with it is even worse. We just need to hear the truth from our city officials and for them to be accountable and transparent, which after all are the first and second values of our 12 city values. We don't need a PR firm to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kelsey, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thanks, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. So I just want to start by saying, as a president and constituent, that, that we are all struggling right now, that there's real trauma, and we all experience trauma without the heightened stress of a pandemic. And I want to acknowledge that there's lots of pain and hardship, and it can be really challenging to remain engaged and empathetic, but especially in Pacific Grove, we have a real responsibility. And the trauma of watching an extremist, violent, encouraging cop be protected for nine months over and over again by the city council, by the chief of police, with excuses, with references to a single BLM statement back from June as if the murder of George Floyd is a response to an officer within your own ranks. A death, I will also remind everyone, was at the hands of a single white police officer while three other police officers watched. And the trauma of racism and the bystanders who allow it to persist is real, and it's not going away on its own. We have to do more than talk. I've heard a lot about how the mayor and the chief and the council, and I know some of you are new, and I'm, I'm really looking forward to, to new energy and, and progress and leadership on this, because I know it's possible. But I've heard a lot about how you want to build trust with the public, and like, we've consistently shown up to tell you how. Like, the public keeps showing, and you keep not responding. I have had a lot of copy paste messages in response to mine and other people's statements. And so, like, I, I'd like to start there, that not responding is, is not helping. And we've been really clear, right? So the Pacific Grove Public Officials and Police Department must take account about accountability for the lack of action and complicity in protecting a far-right militia police officer that was given paid leave after being exposed twice. The need to remove one officer for violent extremism after years working on the force only suggests a need for more accountability for officers and staff, not an end to the problem. You don't just remove one person, and everyone who's worked with him and said nothing and called his hate speech free speech. I think there is actually a real reckoning that needs to happen. And it shouldn't take a violent insurrection at the Capitol for us to do our jobs and ensure basic human rights and public safety and stand against white supremacy. There's been no disavowal of white supremacy, no recognition that the Three Percenters are dangerous extremists. There's no legal barrier to saying anything like that. So again, like, we know, we've, we've studied the patterns. The time for studying and research is over. It's time to act. We know that police departments are punishment models, that punish and discriminate, and we need to not put one more dollar towards that, and instead refunding our.
Thank you.
Carol Marquardt, you have the floor.
Okay. Yeah, I'm a citizen of Pacific Grove, and thank you, Mayor Peak, and city council and city staff. Every time I tune into the city council meetings, I hear an hour of this about the police office. And I never get, you know, I always wonder, you know, I get tired, and after a while I tune out, and I don't really hear what's going on in the city council, other than people's political views. And I don't know whether they all, I don't know why they all have the same political view. Maybe they're on Facebook, or maybe they're on some kind of social media. Maybe they're on Facebook or maybe they're on some kind of social media, but it gets kind of redundant. And I would love to see, I know you have to have public comment, but can we set it at a different time so that we can see some of the business going on in the city council? I also want to thank Marge Jamison, who runs our wonderful Cedar Street Times. It was, she wrote an article about BLM versus the First Amendment. And if some of the people who are talking today would please read this article. I think it's fair and balanced. There is different points of view. And one person, they evidently have a campaign to save this police officer. And a donor wondered what America is coming to and asked, is it okay for BLM to call for the killing of cops? But cops aren't allowed to say something negative about BLM off duty on their private social media. So, and also Marge had a wonderful article about Pat Hathaway. So let's get back to the city business and maybe we can leave this public comment of people with very like minds, maybe in the middle of the city council minutes. They should have the right to speak, but not taking up an hour of city council time when a lot of us would like to know what's going on in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Extension 976, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Last four digits are 976.
Thank you. It's Jennifer Carson again calling from my phone. Hello. A couple of days ago, I sent, I sent an email to Councilmember Coletti and I just wanted to share some of the text of that letter. I'm concerned about the changes to Pacific Grove's leaf blower ordinance, which is, as far as I know, scheduled to go into effect this month. I rent a home in the beach track where leaf blowers are used almost daily. And I was glad to find in the city's current ordinance, a concern for both the air and noise pollution caused by the blowers. While I'm pleased that the new ordinance prohibits gas-powered blowers outright, thus strengthening the restrictions on air pollution, I'm alarmed at the removal of any restrictions on electric blowers, which greatly weakens residents' protection from noise pollution. As you probably know, the World Health Organization has for decades warned of the dangers of noise pollution, which is known to cause a host of physical and psychological maladies, some quite serious. Unfortunately, electric leaf blowers are just not quiet. As an example, I recently chatted with a neighborhood gardener who described his blower as very small and very quiet, his electric blower. And to prove this, he asked me to measure the noise level with my phone app, which is accurate to 2 dB. When he stood in the driveway, which is where he would use the blower, and I stood in the yard across the street, his blower registered 71 dB, which is an intensity almost a factor of 10 above the current law's limit of 62 for gas-powered blowers. 70 dB is the threshold for hearing damage. Daily exposure to levels above 65 dB has been correlated to cardiovascular disease. And this was the output of a supposedly quiet electric blower. Furthermore, since almost all leaf blower use is in a driveway or just in the middle of the street, and since our streets are only about 25 feet wide, the blowers are always close to multiple other properties. I moved to Pacific Grove in September and I really love it here. I especially appreciate PG's focus on quality of life. And I think that noise pollution is a quality of life issue. I do recognize that there are neighborhood noise makers that are unavoidable, like tree trimming and lawn mowing. I just don't think that leaf blowing rises to the level of necessity, given its health risks and the existence of that affordable silent alternative, the broom. I understand that there was an interest in simplifying the current ordinance and I applaud that impulse. I'd be happy to offer any help that I can as a citizen to draft a code that's simple and easily enforceable, but still protects the quality of the neighborhood. And I also understand that this council has a lot on its plate and that this issue is not of the magnitude of, say, a big, big new hotel. However, like in an individual life, small decisions in the life of a community add up to big differences in the quality of that life. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
I don't see any further hands raised for public comment, Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comments and turn to our consent agenda. As usual, I'd like to pull Item 9A, Local Emergency Actions to Be Heard Immediately Following the Consent Agenda. And just a reminder that Items 9B, the HHR and Associates, and Item 9D, the 3CE MOU, both those items have been continued to February 17th. So council members, do we have anyone interested in pulling something off the consent agenda? All right, I'm not seeing any takers. How about the public? Do we have anyone from the public wishing to pull any of the remaining items off the consent agenda?
I see no hands raised, Mayor.
All right, I'll certainly be happy to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda, Your Honor.
Do we have a second?
Second.
May we have a vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Padore?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. And I'll briefly summarize what the council has just done. We've approved council minutes from January 20th. We have held a second reading and adopted an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2021 operating budget for Fund 34. That's for housing. We have received minutes from the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments, from Councilmember McAdams. We've received an annual report from the Planning Commission for 2020, forwarded by Councilmember Coletti. We've received, let's see. Sorry. Don't do that. We have authorized the city manager to enter into an agreement with Four Leaf for On-Call Traffic Engineering Services in an amount not to exceed $70,000. And let's see, we've received minutes from the Economic Development Commission for November 12th and received minutes from the Planning Commission from December 10th. And that brings us to Item 9A, Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor. As everybody well knows, this is the time in the meeting when we discuss those local emergency actions taken in light of the global COVID-19 pandemic and city response here in Pacific Grove. There are no actions presented for council information or for ratification since the last time the city council met on January 20th. However, as you well know, this item does afford the city council the opportunity to discuss the pandemic and enforcement in general. And so with that, I end my report and thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go out to public for comment.
I see no hands raised at this time, Mayor.
Right. I'll bring it back to council, Councilmember Padore, followed by Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, over the past couple of weeks, I've been attending some training sessions with the League of California Cities. One of the things that really intrigued me was a company called Curative. And what Curative does is it's in the business of COVID-19 testing. One of the things that all of you may know is that we don't have any testing spots right here in the city. We have to go all the way to Salinas, for instance. And the other thing too is the company has a, I would say, a really nice, developed a really nice way to test itself. Typically, COVID-19 testing is where you have a nasal swab, kind of like gets all the way to your brain, from what I understand. But the, the company has something where they just swab your mouth and essentially with the three coughs, they're able to administer the testing, et cetera. I think it's a, it's a really neat feature from what, and looks really promising for the city to have a kiosk right here in town where you can, you can actually get tested. Would do, as a next step is just I would provide information for the city manager to see if this is something that we can explore. Thank you.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to share some information with regards to the vaccine. Currently, Monterey County is vaccinating for healthcare workers, public safety and members of the public who are age 75 and up. The state of California recently launched a website tool. It's called MyTurn and the URL is www.myturn.ca.gov. And it asks you a few questions. And when our tier or when your tier comes up, it sends you a notification, either via text message and also as well as email. As far as the general public being able to receive the COVID-19 vaccination, there are several clinics that are happening each week. And those are posted on the Monterey County Health Department's website. They are refreshing that typically every Monday morning. So it's good to get on there to get your spot. If you do need assistance though, with, with obtaining an appointment online, your county supervisor's office is doing phone intake to help make appointments. You do have to share your private information over the phone, but if you're comfortable with that, your board of supervisors office is happy to facilitate that. And also Lions on Aging is a good resource as well. I do understand and have received some communications that it's difficult for our older residents to maneuver the, the online appointment-making system. So, and hopefully we'll be seeing more vaccine coming out. And everyone, please be patient and encourage all of your friends and family to get vaccinated as soon as it's available. Thank you.
And I just want to add a little follow-on to Councilmember McAdams' excellent information. Today's Monterey Herald has, has a good article with a lot of information about how you can get information from the county website about signing up, registering for appointments as well. It's still not clear where all the vaccines will go, but there's now increasing talk about pharmacies getting the vaccine here locally. And I'm not seeing any other council members to discuss this item. So I believe this, we'll just move on to the next item, which is now, was Item 13E and the Small Business Grants. Mr. Harvey?
Thank you, Mayor. Give me a moment to see if I can properly share my screen. Okay. Are you able to successfully see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Apologies for the clumsiness. So I'm here tonight to present a concept review item for a COVID-19 small business grant. And this is brought to you from your Economic Recovery Action Plan City Council Subcommittee, which is comprised of councilmembers Emilio and Tomlinson. This item has previously come before the Economic Development Commission. So this is a proposal to offer grants to small, independent or locally owned businesses. The idea behind the grant program is to offer relief to our local economy in a, in a easy-to-access streamlined manner with a limited amount of strings attached, if you will, in order to try to give our local businesses a leg up. This is a proposal for a grant program rather than a low or no-interest loan program. This is proposed to be funded from the city's general fund in the amount of $50,000. However, we are also recommending a subscription component wherein the general public could help to either backfill or provide additional funds for future grants through a subscription component, much like you might see with, say, subscribing to a public radio or something like that. It would be offered through the city and our finance department would be providing that. The program is a proposal for $5,000 grants on a first-come, first-served basis. This item did go before the Economic Development Commission, as I mentioned. Their recommendations, they were supportive of the program. However, they wanted to see a few changes. They wanted to see the seed money from the general fund increase to $100,000. They were interested in a needs-based system and potentially allocating funds from a lottery system. And with that, I will take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like we have some public comment.
We do, Mayor. Moammar, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Moammar, Pacific Grove Chamber of Commerce. First and foremost, I want to thank council members Emilio and Tomlinson and staff for introducing this program. I'll share with you that the grant program is desperately needed. We have few businesses that are barely hanging in there. Your approval will send the community that you are pro-business and business-friendly. I thank city manager Harvey for working on this. And I hope you will approve this program. And we look forward to supporting you and the city and staff in any way that you could as your Chamber of Commerce. Thank you and have a nice evening.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council and I'm not seeing raised, oh, Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Your Honor. Apologize for my camera going here. Yeah, so I think that this is a creative idea. Obviously, we, we don't know, we do the best we can with what, what's in front of us every day. And this is an example of something that could assist small businesses that are by no, just because the order has been lifted, doesn't mean that they're not still hurting and needing assistance. And I think where it's going to be years before we fully recover from this pandemic. So, you know, I'm fully supportive of this program. And anything we can do to help, and this appears to be a reasonable recommendation. And that's been, that's been vetted by the committee and such. So I'll keep it short. I approve the recommendation. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Coletti?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it did go before the EDC. I actually watched the Zoom meeting of that discussion. I thought it was a good discussion. I think I agreed with a lot of their concerns where they were worried about some biasing or some bias creeping into the selection for those who would receive the grant money. And I think it's imperative that we, we just have absolutely no question about there being any bias in those who get selected for this grant money. Their suggestion was a lottery. Makes a lot of sense. I don't think it'd be hard to implement. General manager has some experience with lotteries for sure. So they also talked about maybe filtering, filtering the applications first based on a needs base. And then after that filter, um filtering the applications first based on a needs base and then after that filter, then those would go into the lottery. I don't know if that's optimum, but I do think we do need to be mindful about uh bias uh for those who do receive it on the part of the city. And I think a lottery is a perfect, uh, perfect solution to that. I would certainly support that. Thank you.
Council member Pedori, then council member McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. Um and uh thank you, council members uh Tomlinson and Emilio for putting this together. Uh I, I actually love this idea. I, this has a traction to become a really general purpose solution for the future. Um basically, um having the community fund initiatives uh that benefit the businesses, et cetera. So I'm all for it. I know there are some mechanics to be worked, worked out, but uh I'm all for it. Thank you.
Council member McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I too um absolutely support this and um thank our small businesses for uh hanging in there and um and of course to um the residents, remember to shop local and support local when you can. Um and then for future consideration, you know, if we do receive um some more CARES money or perhaps it will be called something else. Um instead of it going to the city coffers, which a majority of our CARES money did. Um I would um again advocate that the money go towards our small businesses and um and residents. Um because this is a, a great opportunity to um give directly um some support, uh immediate support which is needed and, and it's going to be needed for a long time. Thank you.
I had um, I thought I, in fact, uh just the last couple of days, I received a couple of emails about uh small business grant programs. And one uh email was from the Monterey County Business Council. And I'll forward that to Mr. Harvey if he doesn't already have that. Um and also another uh email from what's, well, what, from the state. The second application round opens for California's Small Business COVID nineteen Relief Grant Program. Obviously, there's going to be more paperwork involved uh for these other grant programs, but um I, I think we should be telling folks about these other programs too. And uh this, our program should somehow supplement or maybe it applies to businesses that can't be funded through these other programs. Mr. Harvey, did you add some thoughts on that?
I, I do, Mr. Mayor. And uh you can see on your screen, I've asked Mr. Barry Foster, who is our economic development consultant from HDL, to join us this evening. He does have some experience with some of these other grant programs. And he worked with the Economic Recovery Action Plan Subcommittee to uh design uh this particular proposed offering. Uh so I would like to offer Mr. Foster the moment uh to speak, in particular to respond to your comments about other uh state grant programs and other programs out there. Mr. Foster?
Um thanks, Mr. Harvey. Um yeah, I think we have experienced having done this in a number of cities and we've tracked what a lot of communities have done. And what it came, what it came back to is, is having to be as simple as possible to use so that businesses are going to want to do it. Um specifically with this, with the state um grant program. The first round they did, um they had eighty-one pages of rules and regulations. It was very complex. Their, their computer system would crash constantly. And so I, I think what I, what I advised um the subcommittee and the city manager on was to keep it simple and have it be um easy to use and, and help everybody. And I, I think that's the, the point of having a needs-based. There's, there's some challenges there in terms of um so having to be subjective. And, and again, I think the goal really is to have it be as, as easy and non-complex as possible so you can help your businesses. A number of you have talked about um we still have a long ways to go here. And you know, I think the next six months are going to be super critical for businesses. A lot of them are, are really trying to hang on. And they all have a need and, and they, and they all need help now. And so I think having to be as, as simple as possible um really is the ultimate goal.
Council member Tomlinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um yeah, and thank you to the council and, and uh EDC for, for looking at this and the city manager, Mr. Foster. Uh you know, um council member Emilio and, and city manager and I met and have talked about it in a lot of ways. We've, I very much value the input heard tonight as well. Um on, on how we can implement it. Uh the, the CARES Act funding that Councilwoman McAdams brings up um is actually slightly baked into this, just the last round, because some of it we didn't get to expend. It was, I want to say only about five thousand. Um but the set that, that went into our general fund. And so of this fifty thousand from the general fund, you know, I kind of look at five thousand of it might already be that. And if, I, I also would fully support additional CARES money to, to go to this. My other big thing to just point out is I think there's lots of members of our community who want to help. And you know, having individual GoFundMes or ways that people figure out how to help our small businesses and, and supporting them by going there and buying things and, and eating, eating at restaurants is one way. But having the ability to donate uh to this fund and know that it's going to be portioned out to our small businesses, it really will, I hope, set well with our community. And if you don't have, you know, large uh hundred-dollar checks to write, you know, signing up for nine ninety-nine a month um and, and let that subscription model work. Um I, I really like that recommendation and um and I, I would like to, you know, be supportive of, of getting the word out as council and as um staff would in their weekly summaries and in our different social media platforms. Um so that people can try to match the, the fifty thousand that, that we put in from the general fund. And I think it's very possible. And it will go directly to our community. Um so that was the part about this that I liked the most. And then I, I also liked all the other parts that uh, that people have mentioned. So, thank you.
Council member Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. Um uh ditto on what council member Tomlinson said. I did want to add one thing. Um I called it a lifeline. We need to send out a lifeline to these businesses. Uh similar to um business uh just off the Pacific Grove coast. Uh let's just say they're drowning. We send out a life preserver or we send out a lifeguard. Uh I think it's important that we uh keep in, keep uh the businesses, uh small restaurants, everything. Uh and we continue to throw this lifeline out. And I agree, it needs to be simple process, what Mr. Foster mentioned.
Mr. Harvey, I'm hearing almost uh if not unanimous support for the fifty thousand dollar uh small business COVID nineteen grant program.
Thank you.
Is there anything else we need to do with this item?
Uh no, Mr. Mayor. I think we understand council direction and we will uh go forth and develop a uh grant program. And then we can uh provide the council through the Economic Recovery Action Plan Subcommittee with an update uh once it's uh launched and once we're able to um disperse funds.
Thank you. All right, well now uh turn to item twelve A, Ocean View Boulevard Traffic Assessment. Um Director Goh, welcome.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the city council. Let me share my screen. I have a brief PowerPoint on this subject. Okay, very good. So again, thank you, Mayor and uh members of the city council. Tonight I'm here to discuss Ocean View Traffic Calming and Speeding. Uh the city council initially discussed this item on July first. And uh that was regarding speeding and traffic calming on Ocean View. And they requested that the traffic commission start to review these subjects. The traffic commission discussed this and they formed a subcommittee. The subcommittee consisted of Chair Kubica, Commissioners Kim and McLoney, myself, Director Goh, and the former police commander Roy Laken. The subcommittee met on August seven, seventh and again on August twelfth. What we discussed were options that could take place on Ocean View Boulevard. And we noted the pros and cons of all of those options. Factors that were considered for the traffic calming were cost, traffic, bicycle and pedestrian circulations, permitting, how any implementation would affect neighborhoods and roadways along with access. So we began the discussions and when we um presented them back to the traffic commission, we came up with one short-term option and five long-term options. And able to implement the long-term options, we would need additional planning and engineering. And as every project, there's also the do-nothing option. So here's a short-term option. And this could be implemented fairly quickly. What we would do is we would paint the share the road sheros and refresh all the roadway markings. So as you can see in the graphic, that's a shero. It's the chevrons. And basically what that signifies is bikers are allowed to use the road and it just makes vehicle traffic aware that that is a possibility. In addition to installing the bike and the sheros, we would install new signage. Now this would be from Lover's Point to a basically a Silmar Boulevard by the golf course. From, as you all know, we have the bike path that ends at Lover's Point. And from Lover's Point to Silmar is where we have that void. Because once we get to a Silmar Boulevard, we then have a class-two bike lane adjacent to the road edge. So what the sheros does is it creates a class-three bike route. Then we started to look at long-term options. So one of the first long-term option that we looked at would be two-way traffic, but remove parking on the ocean side and create a bike lane. So as you can see in the picture, I'm not sure if you can see my cursor or not, but we have two-way traffic in this picture. We've removed the parking and you create a bike lane adjacent to the curb. That's what we could do at a some or along Ocean View Boulevard. Another option would be to create one-way traffic towards the west from Lover's Point, Point towards a Silmar. And then install a class-two bike lane with parking on both sides of the road. So as you see in the graphic here, you have more of a protected bike lane with a parking lane and then a travel lane. So the cars that are parked protect that bike lane. We've also discussed one-way traffic towards the west, creating a bike lane by having no parking on the roadway at all. So as you can see in this picture, you have a travel lane. And then you have a bike lane that's moving opposite of the travel lane that's painted and heavily noticed. And then on the opposite side of the road, you have the bike lane that's also traveling the same as the vehicles. So in addition to those options, there's also the option of closing Ocean View um or one lane from a Silmar to the lighthouse extension around Point Pinos where there's no houses. So that would be very, it'd be easier to implement. And then there's also the option of closing Ocean View for specific days or weekend. As we do with some of our special events, see how it goes and create that pedestrian and bike, bicycle trail. We can do that as a trial period. But again, for those two options, option four and option five, we would still need to evaluate traffic and pedestrian circulations, bicycle circulations as those detours would then have to be set up through the neighborhoods. So how would we implement the long-term options? We would retain, retain the services of an engineering and planning firm to design, evaluate and assist with the permitting. What that engineering firm would do is they would review vehicle, traffic, bicycle and pedestrian circulations on Ocean View Boulevard. Then they would prepare conceptual designs. With those conceptual designs, we would host public meetings and get feedback. We would then prepare traffic circulation reports. So how, once we got that feedback of what the community liked, how then are we going to circulate the vehicles through the neighborhoods? And that's what we would do to evaluate adjacent roadways for the potential increased traffic. But we also have to evaluate the roadways to make sure those roads are suitable in a construction standpoint to be able to handle that increased traffic. And then additionally, there would, we would have to prepare coastal development permits to implement any of this just due to the potential for loss of parking. In addition to the traffic calming, we also evaluated speeding on Ocean View, Ocean View Boulevard. And at the same time at your July meeting, the city council requested traffic, the traffic commission to do so. Public Works set out our traffic counters for fourteen days in two locations. Thirteen thirteen Ocean View, which is by the local water po- project, the treatment plant down by the golf course. And we did that in August. And then we also set them up on Fifth and Ocean View, near, on Ocean View near Fifth Street. And we did that at the beginning of September. We counted over seventy-four thousand vehicles traveling past those counters. But less than one percent of the traffic was speeding. And of those, that one percent that was speeding, they were only really going about six miles an hour over the speed limit. So between one and six miles an hour, the top, the top speed was basically like thirty-one in that graphic. We did have the one-offs where somebody was going forty-five miles an hour or so, but it, it was far and few between it. I'm sure that was very late night or early morning. So the traffic commission reviewed the data at their October twenty-twentieth meeting and determined that speeding was not a problem. But a solution to the speeding is the implementation of our short-term improvements. Putting in the sheros, updating the signage, refreshing our center lines and all of our road markings, including our speed limit markings. If we do that, that will instantly slow down any speeding that we're having. So our recommendation is tonight to have uh Public Works begin the um implementation of paint the share the road bikeway sheros from Lover's Point to a Silmar and refresh all of our roadway markings, including evaluating our signs along Ocean View. And then the long term would be to allocate funding through the capital improvement program for next fiscal year, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, to retain the services of an engineer, planning firm to evaluate vehicle, bicycle, pedestrian circulations. The long term, if it's desired by the city council, will come forth uh for your consideration as part of the CIP. Um we've yet to really put a true number to it, but I could see the engineering, the designing, all the community efforts um and the permitting for this easily to be a hundred thousand plus dollars for that long-term um, not even implementation, just setting the stage for those. That concludes my report and I am available for any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
Uh yes, Your Honor. Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
There, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, the Traffic Safety Commission approved their recommendations for city council at the August twenty-fifth uh TSC meeting. So I'm glad to have this item finally on the council agenda. Painting shero markings on Ocean View Boulevard and refreshing all street mark uh there is, is the most affordable option and one that may not require further study. But simply painting graphics to permit sheros does not make Ocean View Boulevard calmer or safer. The Point Pinos Trail Committee discussed the desirability of reducing the speed limit on Ocean View to four, fifteen miles per hour. But that was outside their area of responsibility. For such a scenic road with the distractions that that scenery presents, a fifteen mile per hour speed limit would be much safer for bicycles, which we want to encourage and which have had increased use as a result of the pandemic. With greater use of Ocean View by families since the beginning of COVID stay-at-home measures, it's especially important uh to make the road safer for, for the kids on bikes. A, a fifteen mile per hour speed limit is a low-cost option that would be safer for both bicyclists and pedestrians as well as all the types of motorized vehicles that travel on Ocean View Boulevard. I urge you to change the speed limit to fifteen miles per hour, at least as a trial. For drivers who aren't interested in going fifteen miles per hour, driving through town might become more appealing and might help Pacific Grove's businesses. Referring to the long-term recommendations on the chart this TSC Subcommittee prepared, clearly any options um removing substantial parking from Ocean View Boulevard would not be acceptable to Coastal Commission who would have appealed jurisdiction for Ocean View Boulevard between Lover's Point. who would have appealed jurisdiction for Ocean View Boulevard between Lover's Point and a Silmar Avenue and beyond. Sheros may be the only option long-term. And again, sheros could be made safer by reducing the speed limit to fifteen miles per hour. In addition, the TSC Subcommittee's Option Number Four suggests making Ocean View Boulevard one-way from a Silmar Avenue to Lighthouse Avenue around Point Pinos, traveling west and south. That doesn't have to be long-term, it can be short-term. That would require a Lighthouse Avenue extension to be one-way east between Sunset Drive and a Silmar Avenue for the northbound traffic approaching from the direction of a Silmar State Park. This one-way plan for Ocean View Boulevard is also a low-cost option, easily accomplished, that would create safer conditions beyond a Silmar Avenue and which would be even more important during the construction of the Point Pinos Trail Project, which is expected to begin this month and take a year to be completed. I encourage you to establish a fifteen mile per hour speed limit from Lover's Point West and around Point Pinos to Lighthouse Avenue Extension and establish a one-way traffic pattern around Point Pinos. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Kubica, you have the floor.
Welcome.
My name is Andy Kubica and I am the Chairman of the Traffic Commission. I want to thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, City Council, for hearing our present, Dan Go's presentation. I want to thank Matthew McConnell and Joan Kim as part of our evaluation team and our Subcommittee. And I want to thank staff for taking the minutes and generating the charts. The purpose of what we did was to look at Ocean View Boulevard from beginning to end and do a lot of pros and cons, come up with multiple options. Some of them were, we knew would not fly, but we knew that if we did a pro and con, we'd do a comprehensive test of each of the items. Long-term, it may be in the future that we have to do something on Ocean Boulevard because of the increased traffic on the coastal trail and interaction between the bicyclists and pedestrians. I do know that it is a coastal trail and bicyclists do ride on there. It is their, to share, potentially shared area, even though, because people do not necessarily, pedestrians do not necessarily walk all the way on the granite all the time. There's baby carriages and there's ADA-type people who use the blacktop as opposed to using the granite. In the future, we may have to do something. We were trying to present to a council a cheap way of doing it, and that's why we did it ourselves, before we tried to get a consultant in. I do agree with Dan Go's recommendations and that was approved by the City, by the Traffic Commission. And I want to thank, thank you for my time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else from the public?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Inga Lawrence and Doimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I really appreciate Lisa's fifteen miles per hour thought, but my goodness, downtown is fifteen miles an hour. And excuse me, there's more speeding downtown than I see on Ocean View Boulevard. And down, visitors downtown, unless it's so impacted, rarely go fifteen miles an hour down Lighthouse Boulevard. I like the shero's idea and to definitely refresh paint and get it well-marked and especially the speed limit too. And I think the Traffic Commission did a reasonable job and Dan Go on this of low-cost effective because business is suffering, but so is the city. Certainly our monies are not the same, so. I encourage the markings first, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gabe Ruiz, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to, you know, been joining a few of the many council meetings over the last several months. And, you know, my idea on this is I'm a lifelong resident here in Pacific Grove. I do frequent, you know, Silmar and the parking places there. Often have done so my entire life. I would say that I would, I would never, I would say I would never be on the side of removing any type of parking down on that area, but I would definitely like to see an increase in the ability for bicycles and bike lanes or just sharing the road. And so I do like the original idea and I do appreciate the idea of reducing the speed limit to fifteen miles per hour. I drive down there quite often just to enjoy the view because, you know, you pay a whole lot of money to live here and you might as well take advantage of it when you can. And me and my family do that very often, so I'm never in any rush whenever I'm on that road and I don't think many people are, so I don't think that would be too bothersome for anybody. And then just looking at the idea also of, you know, shutting down that certain portion of that road maybe for bikes only. I do see that idea quite often in other, you know, major and developed countries and cities. You know, maybe for the week, I know Carmel had talked about that as well. Certain area that they're looking at about by their beach, by Carmel Beach as well. So I think that'd be a really great idea, even promoting it, you know, one, two Saturdays a month or whatever date might, you know, whatever date it might be. I really think that would open up the opportunity for families to really enjoy walking and riding their bikes and, you know, kind of, kind of bringing back that, you know, that really that downtown, be around the community vibe. And so again, just wanted to, you know, kind of, as somebody who's lived here their entire life and dues really, really, truly appreciate living in this area. You know, I definitely would support some of the ideas, but yeah, just wanted to share that with the council. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I see no other hands raised. You're muted, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you so much to our Traffic Safety Commission for their hard work and, and leadership, as well as to staff. I, I definitely support the immediate painting improvements. And as stated, you know, it's clear from the data that there isn't an issue with the speeding. However, where I see the issue is just the absolute increase of the amount of people, cars, and traffic, which, in my opinion, is becoming unsustainable for our coastline and city. More and more, we're seeing people parking in the bike lanes. I've seen cars parked on both sides in the bike lanes. And as mentioned by Mr. Kubica, you know, the pedestrians utilizing the blacktop for walking and biking or their stroller, et cetera. So I actually like long-term option number five, which is the sort of intermittent closing of Ocean View as a, as a short-term measure. We're seeing visitors continuing to appreciate our coastline during the pandemic. Weekends are very busy, holidays are very busy. And, and I think by providing more space for biking and walking and enjoying our beautiful coast, you know, something I've heard through the, during the pandemic, a lot of residents say, well, we don't ever go down there anymore, there's too many people. And so I do, of course, in addition to accommodating visitors, I think by opening this walkability and access up will actually open up the use to our residents as well. So I would like to hear from my colleagues as far as consideration about doing that. And pre-COVID, the mayor and I enjoyed Bike Night one evening, in a spring evening and Lighthouse Avenue was closed down and it was really a huge success. And we received wonderful feedback. So it would also be something fun and free that we can offer our communities. So, thank you.
Councilmember Clady.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I guess I want to say I'm amazed that, at this one percent non-compliance rate for the speeding. That's, that's fantastic. Certainly not what I was expecting. As regards to reducing speed, my understanding is that it's state law that you can't just reduce the speed without having findings and that can actually end up creating a speed trap. I mean, so maybe you could fill in the gaps on that, Mr. Go.
Councilmember Clady through the mayor, you are correct. In order to reduce the speed limit, we would have to do a complete speed study on the road. That would have to then be approved by the City Council, instituted into our speed surveys and into the city ordinance. So then that reduction in speed could be enforced by the police department. You can't just go pop up signs and have it be enforceable. Otherwise, if somebody received a ticket, they would fight it and win in the court of law.
Okay. There actually has to be a reason and it has to be supported by the traffic study that shows that's an acceptable rate, right?
That's correct. And, and we do do those speed surveys every seven years. The last one was conducted in two thousand and sixteen.
Okay, thank you. Well, definitely good job on the one percent non-compliance level. I, I was curious to know what the cost will be for painting these sheros on, as proposed. Do you have an estimate perhaps?
It would be simply, we would have to buy the shero stencil. We do not have that, so probably less than a hundred bucks for the sheros and the paint material. And then staff time to do it, staff time where we would simply just create a work order and that would be the daily task of the Public Works employees. So there would be opportunity, cost loss, we wouldn't be doing something else, but this would be our daily work. I think we could probably do it for less than a few thousand dollars.
Okay, that's wonderful. So all of the painting that's being proposed, the new lines, the sheros, that can all be done in-house?
It's anticipated that we'll do it in-house. I've already spoke to staff about it. We've started doing some of the work already on Ocean View Boulevard and it is something we typically do annually anyway, so we will just enhance that annual effort.
Okay, great. Thank you. I do like the idea of exploring long-term. The, the idea of closing down Ocean View Boulevard from a Silmar out to Lighthouse. There actually used to be gates there, because this is way before my time. I've got pictures, but it's back in the forties when that, you know, the reservation land was controlled by the Coast Guard. At any rate, I do like the idea of, of studying something like that on. I think that could enhance a lot, especially with this new trail that we're going to be putting in. I think that could enhance a lot of, you know, residents and as well as tourists getting involved in just taking a more peaceful stroll along that point and enjoying it perhaps a little more. I do want to also echo what Councilmember McAdams has noted, as well as a lot of our residents have as well. And that is, is that there is a lot more use of Ocean View Boulevard during this COVID period. And there is parking going on, on the east side of Ocean View Boulevard and Sunset. I mean, some of it's actually in some of the dune habitat. They go up that far. In fact, they're parking right next to the no parking sign. So that's an enforcement issue, but I think it's something we're going to have to, we're going to have to be mindful of. Thank you.
Councilmember Pudori.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think, Mike, I have a question probably for Mr. Go. Just on Mr., Councilmember Clady's last comment, right? Often I find parking to be kind of like haphazard. Some folks like park parallel to the streets, some folks like park kind of horizontal to the street. And that trend kind of continues and probably that's something that affects the dune habitat too. I was just wondering if as part of this entire proposal, short-term or long-term, we could consider that as well? How to, how to, how do, how do visitors actually park? Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I think this is pretty, it's nice work, you know. We're using our volunteer commissions to do substantive work. And so I just want to thank the members of the Subcommittee for volunteering their time to do that and the members of our staff, of course, for assisting. I think that if I'm looking at this correctly, I would, I, I'm kind of looking at Option One as like an interim solution. I don't know what the, let's see what the recommendation is. Possibly it's kind of similar to Option One, but I see that as kind of like the first step, having the bike lane. Obviously, there are a lot of road bikes coming through there and other types of bikes on Ocean View. And I, I run out there a lot and, you know, I, I wouldn't mind, I, I don't mind if there's a bike lane there. You know, I could dodge the bikes, you know, go in the other direction or whatever I have to do. But they'd need that for sure so that the motorists are notified of their presence and where they're going to be on the roadway. It's just a safety issue. So I, I, I don't think parking, there should be any parking right there. I think that that would calm some of the, I don't want to say calm the traffic, but it will take away some of the congestion on the roadway as far as I can see, so. But yeah, I mean, you know, the commission, the committee put a lot of thought into this. So I appreciate those options being brought before us, but that's kind of where my head's at. I'm kind of liking Option One as a short-term solution with some more study to develop longer-term solutions. Thank you.
I'll, I'd, I'd like to again mention Chair Kubica and Director Go. I think this is a fabulous example of a cooperative effort by one of our advisory committees and, and our staff. So thank you very much for bringing this forward. And it looks like you've got good council support for both of the recommendations. Council, I spoke earlier with, with our city manager, council. Action is not required for marking our streets, pavement markings, but we can, we can give you the attaboy or the thumbs up on this. And I guess we'll leave it, we'll leave it at that. I, I like, oh, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention former Councilmember Cynthia Garfield. This, she really kicked this off, so if she's listening in tonight, thank you for doing that. And the putting a long-term study on the capital program for next fiscal year. Yeah, it makes sense until you told me it's probably going to be well over a hundred thousand dollars. So maybe give it a back-of-the-envelope estimate. So we'll, we'll keep that in mind. We won't lose that thought. We may have a hard time funding it right away, so. Councilmember Tomlinson.
Yes, sir. I just, I've, I've been listening and I agree with all the comments that have been made. I'm very supportive of these efforts. I, I know, well, learning from what you just said, Mayor, that we don't need to vote to get the painting done. That's great. Do we need to give the, an agreement on whether we can try the one-way from a Silmar around Point Pinos? Like, is that going to be a recommended action from tonight?
Well, I, maybe we'll let Mr. Go. My understanding is that's one of the long, long-term.
Councilmember Tomlinson through the mayor. May I?
Yes, please.
Yes, please. That is always an option and we have closed that section of roadway down before, though there will still be costs associated with that staffing cost to implement and set up. If we were to do that, I would like to recommend that as part of the CIP and maybe flesh that section out and have just somebody come in or maybe our new traffic engineer that we also just approved. Or maybe our new traffic engineer that we also just approved tonight through Forlee can help us with that study because we will still need to evaluate very minor traffic circulations that will now be pushed up into the Assalmar Boulevard neighborhoods and the Lighthouse neighborhoods. And I think just to make sure that we're doing it right, we should probably at least have some type of review of those neighborhoods and those traffic impacts.
Okay, I would like to, you know, I actually live in those neighborhoods, and I do support the idea. And I also support what you just said about studying it more and then, you know, having the conversation in the public forum so that people who live in the neighborhoods would have the, you know, noticing and know that it's going on and could weigh in. So, but as it stands, I think it is a great idea for many of the reasons that were mentioned here tonight from the public and my colleagues. So thanks.
Councilmember Emilio.
Yes, just to circle back here. I know you said we didn't need to make a motion or anything, but we should go with number one. Number two is what the recommendation of the traffic commission is. We don't have to vote on that. But just to bring it back, I think we should go with that for right now.
All right, well, I'll turn to Mr. Go. Do you have sufficient, or Mr. Harvey, do you have sufficient council feedback on this item?
I do, yes. Yes, Your Honor, right? We will begin to implement recommendation one, and then I will work with our deputy director of public works, Ms. Hallaby. And we will get this at some sort of aspect of the long-term recommendations onto the next year's CIP. We'll flesh it out a little bit more. So there's the kind of long-term, short-term, and then the long-term.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll now go to item 13A, proposed special events calendar for the next fiscal year. Mr. Susick, welcome.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council and the public. After those on the council that I've not yet had a chance to meet in person. I'm Kyle Susick, Recreation Manager for the city. Going to share my screen here with you since I have a presentation. All right. Tonight's agenda report and presentation is for the 2021-2022 Special Events Calendar. A little history and overview of what the special event calendar is. The special event calendar here in Pacific Grove is presented each year for approval by the city council for events that are occurring during the fiscal year of July through June. So these events would be scheduled beginning July 1st of 2021, ending June of 2022. Applications for events are received every August through November and are reviewed by city personnel to determine the impact that the event may have on city facilities as well as the level of support that's required to conduct and host the event. Events meet the criteria of being a special event per the city policy, council policy 900-1, which states that special events are to be reviewed by the recreation board and then approved by the council. This calendar was taken to the recreation board during the December meeting and is recommended for council approving. Included with the policy, the events are either authorized to be classified as either city-sponsored events, which are events that are no cost to the organizer, and that permitting fees, use of city property, as well as staffing time to conduct and administer these events are waived, or they're classified as special events, which are considered full-cost recovery. Fees associated with permitting use of city property, as well as the staffing time allocated toward the conduction of those events, are billed back to the event organizer. During the recreation board meeting, I will make a note that the city staff proposed a recommendation to this policy to create a third classification, what we call city-organized events. The idea behind that is that the city desires to provide a more specific and transparent definition of special event classifications. We feel that events that are hosted by the city, being tied to city sponsor, have created some confusion in the past with event organizers and members of the public. That is not a part of today, tonight's report or recommendation, and a resolution to that policy will be brought before council for further discussions if the council directs. But I wanted to make sure you were aware, that was discussed at the recreation board meeting as well. Obviously, we are still dealing with COVID, and that makes a significant challenge for special events. Right now, the guidelines for special events are that the reopening of large events and venues are not scheduled to open until the state or the county emergency order is lifted. The CDC recommends that you cancel any community-wide mass gatherings, which they consider 250 or more people, if the transmission is minimal to moderate. At this time, moderate county is in the, what they're calling purple tier, and they classify that as widespread community transmission. So not only can we not gather with, or not only are we not in the minimal to moderate space, but we are more restricted than even something that would prohibit 250 people from gathering. We have asked our event organizers, obviously with all of the unknowns, to submit their applications with the full scope of their event to be anticipated that COVID is over come July 1st, 2021. The idea behind it was we wanted to make sure that we understood the full scope of the event, and then we will be working with event organizers to cancel, postpone, or create modifications based on the current guidelines at the time of their event. Obviously, with this calendar being July of 2021 all the way through June 2022, we understand there's going to be significant changes, as there already is, and we'll continue to work with event organizers to modify events or reduce event offerings if required. This year's calendar consists of a total of 20 events. It's a decrease of six events from the year prior. 12 of these events are being proposed as city-sponsored events. Again, those events would have all fees associated with the event waived. Proposed events for city sponsorship are the Fourth of July barbecue, Feast of Lanterns, the National Night Out, PG Concourse Auto Rally, Salute Pacific Grove, Butterfly Parade, Trick or Treat PG, Veterans Day Ceremony, Holiday Tree Lighting, Holiday Creative Lights, Holiday in the Park in the Good Old Days. Majority of city-sponsored events are annual events that are either hosted by the City of Pacific Grove, Chamber of Commerce, or the school district and city partners. And so these are events that have occurred annually and are part of the traditional tradition in the history of Pacific Grove. Remaining events are proposed to be full-cost recovery or special events. These events would have all services charged back to the event organizer. I will make a note that there are two events, the Little Car Show and Walk with Pride, which in years past have been approved as city-sponsored events. However, city staff reviewed the applications, and their determination was that the events did not properly align with the city policy requirements for city sponsorship. They're not hosted by the Chamber of Commerce, the school district, the city, or don't have a partnership agreement with the city. And so we did not feel at the staffing level that we had the authority to allocate these events as city sponsorship at this time. If it's the council's direction to reallocate or reclassify these events to be city-sponsored, we will absolutely be so for this year. As part of the event application, event organizers have the opportunity to request exemptions to municipal codes. We have requests to allow pets in our park, which would be an exception to municipal code 1408-030, which prohibits dogs in the parks. Feast of Lanterns, Holiday in the Park, and Good Old Days have requested to allow animals in the park during their events. As you know, having the animals in the park just creates a more festive environment. We've had events in the past that have done petting zoos, pony rides, walk, a pet parade where the individuals are engaging their events within the event itself. So we're seeking an exception to those, to that code during these event times. As for the fiscal impact, projected cost of the special events during the 2021-2022 year consists of $112,490 of staffing time being allocated toward the operations of these events, with $84,915 being sponsored by the city. Additionally, we are projecting that we would receive an estimated $30,137 that would be collected from a full-cost recovery event for the use of city parks, city facilities, and the rental of the equipment for the operations of these events. The, as you know, Pacific Grove has a rich history of hosting events here in Pacific Grove, and these community-wide events have become part of the history and the tradition of what Pacific Grove is. They have been greatly missed this past year by members of our community, and I know most of you attend almost all, if not most, of these events. We are looking forward to working with event organizers to bring back these events and do so in a way that is responsible and safe for our community. As you know, the impacts of COVID-19 caused significant constraints to the city's budget, and we are anticipating that the resources of the city are going to be limited throughout the next fiscal year as well. So we will be working with event organizers to do our best to lessen the costs associated with these events by working with different volunteer groups or recommending that event organizers find alternate ways to administer these events. But we are making the recommendation with the hope to bring events back to the City of Pacific Grove, to approve the special event calendar for the 2021-2022 year, and waive these fees for the city's support and facility-use equipment for the co-sponsored events, as well as approve the additional events as full-cost recovery, and to allow the municipal code exceptions for the designated events to allow pets in the park. And that concludes my presentation for tonight, and I am filled with many questions that you may have.
Thank you. We'll now go out to the public for comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Dixie Lane, you have the floor. Mr. Susick, can you stop sharing your screen, please? Thank you.
I've missed the button there. Thank you.
That's okay.
Welcome.
I may have missed her. I don't see her any longer. So Inga Lawrenton-Doeimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you, Sandra, Mayor and Council. When Salute was first held in November 2nd in 2019, and it was a project of city staff, and it, it lost the city. We all subsidized the very few. All of us taxpayers subsidized the 75 attendees that paid, oh, $75 a ticket, which didn't begin to cover it, even with all the donations. Anyway, it lost the city about $8,000 that we taxpayers subsidized those lavish meals. It was, it had an EDC review of it right after it happened, and they recommended that it be a full-cost recovery event. The city council actually voted on that and switched it over to be a full-cost recovery. I sent that to you in my letter, copies of the minutes. Here it comes back again as a city-sponsored event. It doesn't benefit the City of Pacific Grove, normal residents. It is something that, that has no equity, no equality in it. And it should be full-cost recovery. I mean, I have no problem with that going on that way, but I just don't want my few dollars to be subsidizing that event, which doesn't benefit the city. So I wish you would change it again and make it full-cost recovery. And then if it flies, fine, but it's, it's right up there with a car auction, as far as I'm concerned. And some other people had commented on that too. And you had the recommendation from the EDC and yourselves that you voted on. So I'm not understanding why it keeps coming back as city-sponsored. So thank you very much, and I hope you put an eye to the equity and who is really sponsoring this event. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dixie Lane, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. I think I've got it working now. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. My name is Dixie Lane, and I am the Event Director for Butterfly Days and a Heritage Society Board Member, which is the host for the, which is the host organization for Butterfly Days. On October 30th, Heritage Society President Steve Honaker delivered the application to have Butterfly Days added to the special events calendar. It wasn't added, and we didn't hear from anyone as to why or how this decision was made to not include it. Suffice it to say, this was a surprise and disappointment. Butterfly Weekend, Reunion Weekend, whatever you want to call it, the residents have always considered it a traditional event, regardless of the scale of the celebration. To give you a bit of history, it was in 1939 when Helen Geringer, as PTA Event Chair, came up with the idea for a butterfly bazaar to raise money for the PTA. The school district embraced the idea and also supported the idea of a children's parade. When Mr. Foster, who was then city attorney and president of the chamber, heard of this new event, he suggested a theatrical extravaganza to be added to the festivities. He ultimately usurped the entire weekend's activities, calling it the Butterfly Pageant. With the city and chambers the primary sponsors and organizers, other organizations jumped on board. However, after a decade, the event lost its leader and so began its slow decline. Over the decades, the size and scope of Butterfly Weekend continued to dwindle until 2010, when city councilman Alan Cohen revived the weekend and renamed it to Taqua Days. It lasted five years, and again, the leader retired. Events are hard to work and take time and money to keep them going, along with a stable organization. The Heritage Society stepped in as the host of, a host organization in 2017 and rebranded the event Butterfly Days. We raised the money, brought businesses and organizations together, and we had an enormously successful event. We found immediate support from the EDC, bid, chamber businesses, and other nonprofits. After the first year, it became a can't-wait-until-next-year event. Everyone loved it. Then COVID hit, and we had to cancel 2020, and this year it wasn't added to the event's calendar. We asked the city to reconsider their decision. The city is always, is always looking for events to bring foot traffic to downtown PG. Butterfly Days does just that. Plus, it fills hotels, brings special events to the restaurants, and shoppers to the merchants. Sounds just like what you keep trying to create. All we need to deliver it is a little support from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Karen Owen, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you, Council, for listening. I want to speak in support to what Dixie Lane just said. There are a lot of volunteers that put in a lot of hours to make things happen for this city, and our goal is to make our city richer and have a time when we, as individuals, can come together and have events. And we don't have very many of these that encompass the scope that Butterfly Days did. In the year before last, the Pacific Grove Art Center was one of the sponsors, and we worked very hard. That was a lot of volunteer labor that went in, and we felt that working together with other organizations like the Heritage Society and the museum was very beneficial to our city. And it turned out to be a wonderful event that brought a lot of people together, and it was so nice to see the city celebrate all together. I hope that the city will rec- I hope that the city will reconsider and adopt Dixie's proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to Council. I'm going to make a suggestion. We'll see if Council likes it or not. The packet has three recommendations for special events, and I suggest we divide the question. We start off with the first recommendation, which is approve the special event calendar for fiscal year 2021-22. And just have dialogue on that and a motion, and then we'll go to number two, same, and then last, number three. Do I see some heads not sound okay? All right. So special events calendar as a topic. Do we have anyone wishing to speak to that? Councilmember Tomlinson.
Yes, sir. So of the events that are proposed, I mean, we heard tonight that one of them, the butterfly one, is missing. So I guess I wanted to ask Mr. Susick, was it a conflict or just an oversight? Or how come it's not on there? You know, maybe the application didn't come in or?
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman Tomlinson, through the mayor. I will have to follow up with Mr. Honiger on that. I don't recall receiving an official application. I know I had multiple conversations with Mr. Honiger, and I believe in our conversations, it was determined that the butterfly activities, the butterfly bazaar activities that they had planned didn't actually use any city facilities, and so there was no formal request necessary because they weren't going to be using city parks or facilities. I will follow up with Mr. Honiger on that, though, this week, and if we need to bring an amended calendar back to Council with that event details, we will absolutely do so.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, because, you know, I would, I definitely, I think my colleagues would agree, but I definitely would agree to add that back if that's something that's being requested, so.
Yeah, I will say there was no attempt or denial of the application from my recollection.
I didn't think so. Okay, thank you.
I'll jump in here. I have concerns about two of the items, two of the events. One is the trick-or-treat PG, and I'm concerned that that event will be perceived as in competition with the downtown Business Improvement District Trick-or-Treat that's held on a Saturday, that brings people, families into downtown. And we've been doing that for, I don't know how many years. So I'm concerned about the possible, the optics of that, the competition, and having two trick-or-treat events, obviously, next to each other. The other event that I'm concerned about is the, what is it called? It's the Vintage Motor Cars Car Show. That's the auction. And it's my understanding that Worldwide Auctioneers has not paid what was owed the city last year. Understandably, it was because of COVID-19, and we didn't have the events, and so they didn't have any revenue. But now we have, we have an agreement with them, and I think we need an amended agreement before we put it on the special events calendar. I don't want to prove event where the sponsor, at least on paper, still owes the city money. Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a couple of questions. Kyle, I know this came up when we were on the dais, when we were in, shall we say, the old days. Now we're on Zoom. But number 10, Walk with Pride, when does that usually occur?
Councilmember Emilio, through the mayor, the Walk with Pride is hosted by a local organization that supports the Pacific Grove Unified School District. They generally have hosted the walk along Pacific Grove Recreation Trail in the fall. I believe, and I don't have the actual date in front of me right now, I believe it's scheduled for either September or October, and that's been kind of their annual event.
I see. Okay. And am I correct, Kyle? The total staff time is $180, and that the usage fees is $1,012, or approximately grand. Is that true then? What I'm reading, is that correct?
Yes, Councilmember Emilio, the staffing cost would primarily be the setting up of signs and posting, as well as a inspection of the trail to make sure that it is accommodating the increased traffic flow for that day and the walkers, and letting other users of the trail know that an event is being scheduled and conducted. The fees for the use of the trail would be that $1,000 to have their approved event for the use of the trail to conduct their walk.
Yeah, that's what I thought. If I remember right, it was in support of Pacific Grove Unified School Teachers, raising money, that type thing. And I would like to see that as a city-sponsored event. That's just what I'm talking about, just from the history behind it. And the costs seem to be nominal in the big picture. So that's where I'm coming from.
Any other council comments on this special? Councilmember McAdams.
So you wanted to sort of three-part this. So would you like a motion for?
Please.
The first section. Okay, great. I move, we approve the special events calendar for fiscal year 2021-2022, with the caveat that staff will come back after reviewing and/or discussing the Butterfly Days event with that organization.
Second.
All right, and Ms. Candell, can we have a vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember McAdams.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
On the motion.
Aye.
All right, question on the motion.
Yeah, question on the motion. Then the Walk with Pride would still be a full-cost recovery?
No, we're going to handle that in a second vote.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
It's just the calendar.
Oh, the calendar. Okay, that's fine. Before, yes, on my vote on that.
Okay, Councilmember Emilio, yes. Mayor Peake?
No.
Councilmember Pedri?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries six, one.
I'll vote to, I'll say yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Councilmember Coletti.
All right, we'll now go to the second recommendation from staff, which is approve the 12 proposed events as city-sponsored events and waive fees for just those events. And do we have any further discussion? Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. So I concur with Councilmember Emilio with regards to Walk with Pride being a city-sponsored event. And also, I am not able to support Salud being a full-cost recovery event. I am not able to approve use of our taxpayer dollars and staff resources for a single evening for a very small amount of people, which really doesn't benefit the city, especially with the pandemic. I think having a city event that costs $75 per person is a slap in the face to our community members who have lost a job. People are struggling to put food on their tables, and also they're unable to pay rent. So I mean, I would rather take that money that, you know, is a potential loss to the city of $5,000 to $7,000, and let's donate that to the food bank. And so, you know, for me, it can be full-cost recovery, but I absolutely am unable to support it being a city-sponsored event. I don't think that that's appropriate. Thank you.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, I remember having these discussions through the years now about what should be full-cost recovery and what should be city-sponsored, and the kind of rule of thumb that I remember hearing from folks is, you know, if it's open to everyone and available to everyone and benefits really majority of the city, then that's what we're putting them on and calling them city-sponsored for that reason. And, you know, Butterfly Parade, Veterans Day Ceremony, Stillwater, you know, Holiday Lights Parade, all these things are accessible, free, available to old, young, every, you know, everybody. And so I love seeing those as city-sponsored. The full-cost recovery, I would completely agree that Salud should be full-cost recovery. And I think we've already discussed it. We just have never actually taken a vote on it. So if that serves me, my memory right, so hopefully tonight we can vote to move that to be full-cost recovery. And then Walk with Pride, you know, we did go back and forth. My recollection was that it's, it benefits the school, and not everybody has a person in school here, and so maybe it was a tweener, but, you know, it isn't very much money, and I wouldn't want to take it from the teachers and what they're trying to do. So I think having that as a full-cost recovery event is totally doable. So my suggestion is to support, what I think two of my councilmember colleagues already said, to move those two events to full-cost recovery and otherwise approve the rest of it as is.
Can I ask for clarification? We just had two councilmembers who suggested Walk with Pride as city-sponsored, and I believe you just said.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said it wrong. Yeah, you're, I, I, you're channeling what I'm trying to say. And so I'll say it correctly, that Walk with Pride would be city-sponsored and Salud would be full-cost recovery.
Okay, excellent. Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Mayor. I completely agree. I think the Walk with Pride, I think the impacts are low to begin with, and I think it is, it is something that we would want to support with full-cost recovery, and that the, and that that Salud should not be city-sponsored. So I support everything my colleagues have said.
Well, I also support both of those changes. I will voice some concern about John Maltin's Marina, it's Marina Auto Sports that does the Little Car Show, and we've had that for many years. It's a very, very well-received community event. And I hope we, it looks like it's only $500. I hope, Mr. Susick, that you can sell that to Mr. Maltin, and we'll still be seeing the Little Car Show. I believe at the end of the day, after the event, he turns around and gives you, Mr. Susick, the Recreation Department, a check. So I'm a little bit nervous about handing him an invoice at the beginning of this event and then getting a check from him at the end. I'll let you finesse that. Okay, looks like we need a motion. Councilmember McAdams.
Mayor, I actually have a question for Mr. Susick. Was there, was there a reason for the Little Car Show to be charged if in the past it has been a city-sponsored?
Yes, Councilmember McAdams, through the mayor, you know, the Little Car Show and Walk with Pride, both events on a calendar are proposed as full-cost recovery events because they don't, we don't have an agreement with those organizations to consider them sponsored by the city. If you read the city policy, it states that events hosted by the school district, the Chamber of Commerce, and the city are considered city-sponsored without a formal agreement to allow us to, us at the city staff level, to propose sponsoring this. We felt that we had to classify it as full-cost recovery, but as the discussion has been had regarding Walk with Pride, it is Council's direction as to what classifications you choose and which events you choose to sponsor or not sponsor. I will say I have had discussions with Mr. Maltin already regarding this and made sure he was aware of our proposal for a full-cost recovery. And he acknowledged that he understands at least why it would be classified as that at this time.
Okay, and then a follow-up question. Could that be rectified, then, with putting, with implementing an agreement with these two event organizations?
Yes, Councilmember McAdams, I would assume that, you know, a formal agreement, even in the interim between now and when their event happens, you know, could be potentially reached, whether it's a one-year agreement or a long-standing agreement so that we can come back on an annual basis and have that classification tied to that, would be something that we can definitely explore with these event organizations and consider for, whether it's this calendar or future calendars.
Great. Okay, thank you. Mayor, would you like a motion?
Please.
Okay, let me give this a shot. So I move that we approve the proposed events as city-sponsored events and waive fees for the city staff support and facility equipment use, but removing Salud as a city-sponsored event and replacing it with Walk with Pride.
I'll second that. May we have a vote, please?
Yes. Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Mayor Peake?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember Pedri?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you very much. And then we had just the last recommendation. Allow exceptions for pets in parks. Any discussion? If not, may I hear a motion?
I move that we allow municipal code exceptions for the designated events to allow pets in the park.
Second.
Second.
I'll start the vote. Councilmember Tomlinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Mayor Peake?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Pedori?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you very much. It's now 8:38, and let's take a 10-minute break. Let's resume where we left off, which is on item 13B, which is our annual audit. And Director Hannah, welcome. And you are on mute.
Thank you, sorry about that. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Council, and members of the public. This evening, we have Sheldon Siobhan from Siobhan and Associates with us. He's with the, he's our certified public accounting firm that is auditing our annual financial statements. And he will be there to present some information. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sheldon.
Perfect, thank you, Tori. Actually, this is Paul Pham. I'm with, I'm a partner with Siobhan and Associates, the city's independent auditors. I want to start out just thanking you for inviting me out to share the results of the June 30th, 2020 audit. Right off the bat, I wanted to say congratulations to Tori and her team for getting the GFOA Certificate of Excellence. That's definitely something to be proud of. The Comprehensive Annual Report, it provides quite a bit more transparency, takes a lot more work, and there's a greater degree of scrutiny in terms of financial reporting standards. I see the screen is frozen on your guys' end. Can you guys hear me okay still?
We can hear you.
Okay.
Screen is blank.
Okay, all right. And then, are you able to see my presentation?
No, maybe Ms. Hannah can help.
Okay. See what's going on here?
Give me just one moment, I need to download your presentation. There it is, it's coming up.
Okay, again, some of my notes went away. Sorry about this, little technical difficulties here. Sorry about that, timing's just perfect.
I do have the presentation available if you need me to share. This is the city clerk.
Yeah, I think I might have to. My computer's kind of frozen up since I started sharing. It was working just fine all night. Yeah, my apologies.
That's okay. I'll just let you direct me as to next slides.
Okay, you know, my notes aren't even showing up, so I.
Well, I suggest you do the best you can.
Okay. Well, I, okay, I'm gonna wing it since I can't see the numbers in front of me. But in the first, in the first slide, well, I mean, our audit, we did, we performed it under generally accepted auditing standards as well as generally accepted governmental auditing standards. And so, our audit was a two-phase audit, you know, and normally we go out there interim, but unfortunately this year due to COVID-19, it had to be a remote audit. So we're a little disappointed we didn't get to come out to visit the city because we always enjoy this job going out there. So about halfway through the year, we went out and, oh, we performed our interim audit where we assessed the city's internal controls. We did some sampling and testing there. And then after the year-end, when the books are closed, we performed some standard procedures where we substantiated the ending balances. So, on the slide, you, Statement of Net Position, you'll see that the city's net position decreased just slightly. But you want to keep in mind that the city did have a one-time capital contribution. I believe it was $1.7 million for the library project. So if you don't account for that one-time revenue, the city actually had a decrease, I believe it was of $2 million. And as you would expect, due to COVID-19, that mainly came from the decrease in taxes. I believe that was $2 million, $2 million, and $1.3 million of that was just from transient occupancy tax alone. So, yeah, and I'm sure you guys are well aware of that due to the impacts from COVID-19. And so, the, the chart showing the revenues, you can see there that the city does have a heavy reliance on property taxes, so that did play a role. In terms of the expenditures on the next slide, most of that, the $4 million increase in the expenditures were due to accruals related to your pension and depreciation. So a lot of those are just accounting numbers that don't really impact you on a day-to-day basis in terms of, you know, how you're typically relying on your funds. Yeah, okay. So, as far as the audit results, we had a clean audit and a clean opinion on our reports that we issued. We didn't have any passed-on adjustments, any material misstatements or findings that were noted, and no difficulties or disagreements with management. You know, I want to take this opportunity to also thank Tori and her team as well as some of the other departments that assisted in the remote audit because it does require quite a bit more work to perform a remote audit. And public works in particular, you know, with respect to our Measure X and bid compliance testing that we did. So, thank you very much for that. And I apologize, I don't have all my notes in front of me, but I did the best I could to wing it. So if you have any questions, I'd like to open it up for questions.
Just a moment, you have it on the pension slide? If you'd like to talk a little bit about pensions?
Okay, so the pension, as you, as you can see on that, and then historically, since Gatsby 68 rolled out, it, it does, it has a substantial, it makes up a substantial part of the city's overall long-term obligations. And then on the slide after that, you'll see the city's OPEB, the other post-employment benefits are also fairly significant. Not quite as significant as your pension plan, but still, those are big, long-term obligations with respect to the district's financials. I thank you for that reminder, I forgot about those slides. Were there any more questions out there?
Ms. Hannah, did you have any, anything else to add before we go out to public comment?
Mayor, if you'd like, I do have just a very brief presentation that talks about the next time we're talking about finances, or I can just state it, along with the differences when we gave our fourth quarter update from the point of the audited financial statements, what may have changed?
Whatever's your pleasure.
Can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
I just wanted to just put out a couple of dates there that are coming up for talking about finances. At the last council meeting, we briefly mentioned that we were going to have a budget workshop and the long-term forecast. And we've surveyed the council members, and we have a date set at March 10th. Part of that workshop is going to be more of a finance 101, and then we're going to go right into the long-term forecast and some fiscal planning. And we're also looking to bring forward the local water project business plan in early March. I believe you've pretty much covered the sections of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It is a statement of what we have done, whereas the budget is more or less a planning document. And one thing to note is that when we're looking at the audited financial statements, they do combine some funds. So when we talk about the general fund from a budgetary perspective, it will be slightly different or somewhat different. There are some minor funds with a fund balance of $539,000 that are rolled up into the general fund. And this is because they're more of general purpose. But nevertheless, we want to track things separately, like the Kew estate. We want to see what we're actually buying with that. And we want to ensure that we're spending monies that were donated for the Stillwell Children's Pool to the, into a separate fund. So that's one of our reasons for tracking it separately from a budgetary perspective. Just as a recap, the beginning fund balance was $11.5 million when it was combined. The operating excess or deficiency, which was in excess this year, was $414,000 in net difference between revenues and expenditures. And that's largely due to some of the budgetary cuts that were made in response to COVID. However, we still had $2.1 million in transfers, and that was largely to support capital projects that were in progress. So at the end of, end of the year, our drawdown from fund balance was $1.7 million with an ending fund balance of $9.8 million. And so if you may recall, when we gave the fourth quarter report, we talked about ending the year at $9.3 million. If you take away that $500,000 for those minor funds, we're coming in closer, I'm sorry, at the other presentation, we talked about it being $9 million. But when you take the $500,000 away from the $9.8, we're coming in about $275,000 better than we anticipated. And it was primarily due to some last-minute grant billings and some revenue internal charges that were being made. And so with that, I will conclude my presentation and open it up and turn it over for any questions.
Thank you very much. Now go out for public comment on this item. Do we have any public comment?
I see no hands raised, Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council. Council discussion, and you are, we, let's see. We are receiving the reports. Besides the audit, I'm looking at the recommended actions. We're receiving the financial statements, auditors' recommendations. There's, there's a host of recommendations that are all received. Councilmember Pedori?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question, probably Tori, you can answer it. One of the recommendations coming from the Siobhan and Associates is the OPEB benefits, which are about four-odd million. They recommended that it needs to be placed in an irrevocable trust. The status says it was, fund was closed and implemented. Does this mean that the funds are in a trust? Or is that an action that we plan to pursue?
We did not open up a trust, a trust account. We were setting aside some funds for future OPEB liabilities. However, a decision was made in last fiscal year to take the funds away from the OPEB trust and place them in the general fund to help assist with finances. Now, the OPEB liability is, is, is funds that we set aside for future medical benefits. And what we are now putting for a medical benefit is a per's minimum benefit of about $132 a month, I believe, for an employee. And those are for retirees who choose to elect to take the benefit. We previously had an additional benefit, but that was canceled in one of the, in one of the MOU contracts. So, to answer your question, we have an OPEB fund, but we are not, we have not put our monies in a trust, and we have decided to move the monies that we were setting aside into the general fund.
Okay, and just a follow-up question there. Is it actually okay to move money from the trust back to the fund? Is that, is that okay? Because I thought once you put it in a trust, it's like, you can't touch it.
We, we never put it in a trust.
Oh, you never put it in a trust?
We just maintained it as a separate fund within the city's accounting structure. So just like we have several special funds, we just put our money separately and segregated into a different, a different area, so it's not mixed up with the general fund monies.
Got it, and moving forward to this money is kind of like classified on its own, so we won't touch it, it's only going to be used for OPEB?
Right now, we don't have any monies there. But if council were to say we wanted to start placing money in that fund, that is something that we can do as part of the budget process.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Councilmember Clady?
Thank you, Mayor. From that same letter, the management recommendations and areas for consideration, there is a section under TOT billings. One of the, one of the findings that they make is that they recommend the city perform routine audits of the TOT information submitted by owners. What exactly does that mean? And what is the plan on, on, on following that recommendation?
In relation to that recommendation, when we signed a contract with HDL companies, it did include a provision to be, to audit. And that is something that we're looking at at the beginning of this calendar year. Part of that would be, the first step would be having an educational forum for all the lodging industries to let them know what was, what's going to be happening and what the process is. And then typically, we or they would look and see, is there something that is, that should be audited? Or we randomly select businesses for audit just, just to make sure that we're not looking at someone in particular. So one, is there a reason why we may be seeing some irregular receipting patterns where we want to look at something? Or is it more or less, let's just randomly select someone as, as an option of just seeing how everybody is actually maintaining their records and reporting?
So that's commercial TOT, you mentioned. What about residential TOT?
That is something as well that we could look at as, as part of the process, or we would be looking at.
One of my concerns deals with, so there's two, actual two agencies or firms we're using to collect TOT. One's HDL, as you know, and then also Airbnb through our voluntary collections agreement. Airbnb's, or the ability to audit Airbnb is much more problematic just because they, of the limitations within the VCA we signed. Has, has that passed any scrutiny by our auditors, the Airbnb VCA?
I would look to our auditors. I know, Mr. Siobhan, I had shared with him some of your concerns and comments. I don't know if he relayed that to, to Mr. Pham. Are you available for a comment?
Yeah, you know, that's, that's something, if you're talking specifically with Airbnb, that was not something that we looked into as a part of this audit, but it's something we can for the upcoming audit, if that's something you would like for us to do.
I would, I would hope that would be done for the next audit for this next fiscal year, the current fiscal year. So, thank you very much.
Any other councilmember comments? Doesn't look like this item requires any motion. Just a receipt of information. So, Director Hannah, do we need to do anything else? I'm glad to see, I'm glad to see that we have a clean audit and a clean opinion.
Yes, that's wonderful. We try.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you very much. All right. And Mr. Pham, thank you for being with us tonight. We'll now, now move on to. now move on to the next item. It's 13C, City Survey Results. Mr. Harvey?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Let me see if I can share my screen successfully here. Okay. Are you able to see my screen successfully? I'm sorry, are you able to?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Let's get started. So yes, this is the city survey results. So the survey was a web-based survey launched back in November. It provided nine questions with two long response inputs. We received some constructive criticism with over 300 responses, and it gave us an opportunity to look at process improvement with some already underway. I'm going to go through some of the survey responses here, and I'm not going to read all the information on, on the slide, but I'll go through the questions. The first one was, how do you rate your satisfaction with the way you receive information from the city of Pacific Grove? Most indicated that it needed some improvement. However, a second leading response was, was good. Next question, how do you feel the city is listening and responding to the concerns of the community? Most indicated that needs some improvement, with second indicating it needs a lot of improvement. Next question, how do you feel the city is communicating with the public? Most indicating it needs some improvement, with the next, most received response being good. Next survey question, how do you feel the city is performing overall? Most indicated that it needed some improvement, with the second largest response being good. And then we're going to go into the responses by department. First being Public Works, the majority of respondents felt that that department received a good rating. Community Development, most responding good, but a similar number responding adequate. Park and, Parks and Recreation, apologize for the typo, most responding good, a second responding adequate. Finance, also known as Administrative Services Department, most indicating that they don't have interaction with the department, followed secondly by adequate. The Police Department, most responding excellent, with the second response being good. The Fire Department, which is a contract for Monterey Fire Department, of course, most responding excellent, with the second category being good. Human Resources, again, this is one, an internal-facing department, most indicating that they did not have any interaction with this, this department, but the second response being good. City Manager's Office, most indicating that this needed a lot of improvement, with the second most received response being needs some improvement. City Clerk's Office, again, another department that most indicating that they don't have any interaction with this department, but the second response being excellent. This one, I'm sorry, there's a mislabel at the top, but this is the Library Department, the majority responding excellent, second most being good. City Attorney's Office, most indicating that they don't have any interaction with this department, but the second category being good. And with that, I'll go to any questions that the council may have, including any discussion of the, of the long-answer questions, or any areas where we've already started to embark upon improvement. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go off for public comment on this agenda item.
I see no hands raised, Mayor. Take that back just a moment. Now they are all coming. Norma, you have the floor.
Welcome.
I spoke earlier, and I knew this was on the agenda. So one criticism I have is that there were only 300 responses. This wasn't well-promoted by CoPro Media at all. So the, so the participation was very low. When I read the, the long responses on the city survey, I discovered that the majority of the public comment, comments were totally ignored. And, and then I also saw the public comments from, from people that did an analysis. Two citizens did an analysis of the survey with graph and comments. I saw another person that basically got to the meat and bones of the survey by doing a word search. The words, city website, social media, work order requests, and volunteer opportunities. They only had, they did it by this word search, they only got 19 total hits. And that's what your, your whole city based their entire four actions, the action plan, on those 19 total hits for those four categories. You're totally ignoring the rest of the survey. What got the most hits were the city manager at 66 hits, city council at 77, and transparency at 34. I feel like the, the CoPro Media needs to do another analysis of the survey and address those concerns with appropriate actions by the city council. So I, I just feel like the real results were, were ignored. People, concerned citizens put a lot of effort into the, into those responses, and they, they participated, they gave constructive dialogue and community involvement in those answers. And I, I don't think they were given adequate consideration. So I totally agree with those analysis by those other citizens that, that were listed at the bottom. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Inga, Lawrence and Deimer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, this, this is one that cost us another $34,000, and it grew out of this police transparency that then, you know, a media spin company that got hired to make us the police department, you know, transparency? Well, the report out on it, yes, I thank him for the slides, because it does show the very glaring lack of trust and faith in our city manager. And it needs to be pointed out, it needs to be acknowledged, and it needs to be accountable. Just, this is it. Transparency without accountability means nothing. And so I said it all in my letter, and parts of it even were in the paper. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you. In the graphical representation of the results of the community survey, the bar graph for the city manager stands out, enlisting first, the very elevated number of responses in the most unsatisfactory category. Over 90% of responses are reported in the category described as needs a lot of improvement. The fact that this particularly unsatisfactory rating goes unacknowledged in the city manager's agenda report is consistent with his lack of acknowledgement of the gist, gist of many of the long-answer responses in the survey. I counted 40 responses that said, we need a new city manager, or fire the city manager, or we need a local city manager, or we need a city manager who replies to phone calls and emails, or there needs to be more accountability for the city manager. The city manager gave a few examples of general concerns expressed in the survey responses and city actions to address those concerns, such as the website being difficult to navigate, or more information needed on social media, or a simplified work order service request being needed, or a lack of volunteer opportunities. But the city manager's failure to acknowledge community ratings of the job he is doing suggests he has not given a lot of thought to those concerns, and what changes he personally can make in response to those concerns about his performance. The city has hired a transparency engagement advisor, who said at the October 21st council meeting that her team will teach staff open, honest, and transparent communication skills, with a focus on engagement and accountability. The city manager does not appear committed to that focus over three months later. When can we expect a report from the city manager to address his own actions in response to the substantial community concerns expressed in the survey? Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
All right, bring back council for council discussion. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I, looking at these results, I think it's hard. It might be really hard. This is my, just off-the-cuff response on this. I, I think that it might be really hard to get, you know, results that reflect, you know, the majority of the community. I think we're going to see, there might be, I didn't look at the statistical significance of it, and things like that, and who the respondents were, who the respondents weren't. It's, I don't know. I think it'd be tough. I know that when they do major surveys online and things like that, you know, the, like Pew, for instance, the leading, the leaders like Pew Research Center and things like that, they have scientific protocols for this. So I'm kind of just, that's kind of what I'm thinking about. I know that some of it, yeah, the website is difficult to navigate, that is a fact. So that, you know, that's, I, I think I can see that being very solid. But there are others that, you know, I think that, that there are, we had to do a really good job with volunteer opportunities. I think we have a very good board and commission volunteer program with good community participation. So, yeah, I don't know. I mean, I, I think it's hard to say. But I do like the information. I think it does say something. And I think it's a tool for us as leaders to think about in our policymaking. I definitely think that, and probably all of the results are, are that. So that's kind of where I'm at with it. Just, that's kind of my general thoughts about it. Thanks.
Councilmember Pedori.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to thank all of the community members that responded and provided their feedback. Thank you again. In reviewing the, the survey results, to me, it appeared like there are themes, basically transparency, communication, accountability. And knowing that website is a issue, communication is also an issue, I would say that it's reasonable to assume that not everyone was actually aware that a survey actually was being conducted. So perhaps that's something, as we better the website and communication, something to think about. There's also a suggestion that, actually, like a suggestion box be placed by the city hall, and community really wants a town hall for the residents to interact. I think the bottom line is that if you're considering the 300-odd community members that responded to be a good sample, really, to me, communication appears to be, appears to be the key, and we need to have more forms of communication. Thank you.
Councilmember Big Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just a couple of questions. I'm wondering, who wrote the questions and actually conducted the survey?
Councilmember McAdams, through the mayor. It was, survey was initiated at the suggestion of CoPro Media in conjunction with city staff, but the questions were largely devised by CoPro Media.
And then what was the purpose of the survey? Like, what was the, the purpose and the potential outcome?
Through the mayor, the purpose of the survey was to establish a baseline to determine where the city needed to go as far as improving its communication. And so to that end, I'm going to be working with CoPro Media on a proposed communication plan, looking at the survey responses as, as part of that bedrock, if you will.
Thank you. So I would like to thank the participants of the survey, and I read all 28 pages of the comments. So my takeaways were a call for more transparency, better communication, and city management improvements. So, you know, in the agenda, there are samples provided of the survey concerns, and the city's response, which, you know, thank you, I appreciate that. But I think that we're amiss by not including transparency and city management. And so for me, when I, when I went through all of the comments, you know, I mean, those were the two that most consistently came up. And I don't take, you know, I mean, this survey was an effort by everybody. So I don't take the comments lightly. And I know for me, you know, as a council member, and just the, for the city council collectively, like, one of our biggest responsibilities that we have, and our obligation and only employee, is that we collectively oversee the city manager. And I don't take that responsibility lightly as well. So, you know, for me, I'll continue to work for the residents, and I just, I, I hear you. So, so thank you for participating, and I definitely, you know, would like to, to see another survey, perhaps in six months, to sort of, we have this baseline, and so now we can gauge in six months, you know, where have we made improvements, and, and where do we need to make more improvements? Thank you.
Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. And my, my thoughts on this are, you know, it's, it's always good to ask the question and put the survey out. So I'm glad that CoPro recommended this, and that we've done it. I would have liked to see more results, but we have the results we have, and, and we, we need to pay attention to them. It's really, it's good feedback. And, you know, I don't think there's probably any city in California right now that would be pegged at 90% approval rating of some kind. This is a challenging time to be in these leadership positions. And I think if you're, if you're working it and working hard and, and trying different things, you know, you're, you're likely to have some, some areas that you need to improve. So this tells me that we have an engaged staff, an engaged city manager, doesn't always get it right, but that's the important part, is that we give that feedback. And in full transparency, we have not given our city manager a review in two years. So that is a problem that I want to address, probably not right now. But we need to do that as a city council body, and give him a review, and give him feedback. And we can start with some of the comments from, so that, that's on me, you know, and that's on all of us, that we haven't done that. I also think that the, the feedback that we've gotten about the departments is going to be valuable to the city manager, because it's his job to, to run those departments, and, and to be able to give it to his department heads, and, and let them grow, and find out a way how to tackle the, this feedback and, and do better. I'm all about debriefing and feedback and getting better. So I think this survey is very valuable. We shouldn't look at it as a really bad thing. We, we want to take the information and, and do better with it. And we have our goal-setting meeting coming up really soon, and this should be weaved into many of our thoughts, and, and how in setting goals, we will set them deliberately to improve in these areas that are highlighted. So that's, that's my takeaway. I appreciate the, the city manager is providing this information to us tonight, and that's how I've, I've processed it. And I do thank the citizens who took the time to give us valuable feedback.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. I actually do appreciate the
I actually, uh, do appreciate the responses, uh, 300 responses. But actually, I have a couple of questions. Um, thi- this survey was not scientific. Is that correct?
Counselor Emilio through the mayor, no. It was, it was not scientific. It, uh, was deliberately designed so that people could submit answers anonymously. Uh, and in, in doing that, um, it did allow for multiple entries. And, and that was an observation that Cole Pro Media made. Some of the long answer responses and timing and responses appeared that there were multiple entries made by, um, some individuals.
Yeah, that was a, another, uh, question I had, and you answered that question. If, um, there were any multiple responses. And again, I appreciate that. But I think, um, one of the goals would be, since this almost seems like a, I don't want to call, call it a survey monkey, but, uh, it seems like a survey monkey to me. Uh, it would be, uh, great if we can get representative, everybody, 15,300 people rather than just 300 people. If we can get 15,300 people to respond to a survey, which is really difficult. I know that. Uh, that's understandable. And, uh, I agree with, uh, council, councilperson, uh, Tomlinson, that this is a baseline and, uh, go up from here. Uh, and I just have to, um, share a, a quick story for myself. I was actually a superintendent of a schools, uh, in, uh, San Jose and had a fantastic, uh, five-member school board. And suddenly, um, things changed. And after six years, after putting $60 million worth of bond money into this school district, um, I saw the writing on the wall for myself that suddenly council, um, and the, there was school board changes, so it's time to move on. But that's just a quick story that, um, I wanted to share. I also wanted to share that, again, I want to reiterate that this is a baseline, but I think it's important. 300 people do not represent the 15,300 people we have.
Counselor member Clowdy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think it is important to, uh, receive and accept and process the feedback we've given. Um, you know, when, when you say there's maybe multiple entries, there's, there's, there's no proof of that. It's, uh, it's conjecture. And I, 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 I'm more interested that we, uh, we do some reflection on our own about what this feedback is offering us. Uh, there is some good feedback. There's some bright spots. You know, the feedback we received on the library I thought was outstanding. However, um, the survey clearly shows a profound, uh, lack of confidence in our city manager. And I find that troubling, and I'm not willing to write that off as possible, um, you know, multiple entries. I think, I think it's important, especially when you review the written answers. There's no indication there that, uh, someone was trying to, uh, write uh, the same thing under multiple, uh, entries. So, I think some of those answers were, uh, the long answers provided by the, the public were, could be very useful. Um, so I think the council, based on this, should, uh, should not discount the feedback. And I think we should focus on evaluating the city manager's performances, as, uh, uh, council member Tomlinson said. Uh, there, it's been two years. And I, you know, the overwhelming, uh, character or feedback that I, I took away from this was we need, we need to kind of focus on the performance evaluation. So, thank you.
I have, um, a question about the survey. It said that Cole Pro, uh, Mr. Harvey, Cole Pro Media devised the questions. And then, then it was staff that ran the survey and analyzed the results. Is that correct?
Well, Cole, Cole Pro Media devised the, the questions. We launched the survey with, with their assistance. Um, you know, the analysis was kind of a joint effort between Cole Pro, uh, and, and myself, just looking through the responses received.
Okay, thank you. You know, um, earlier in our meeting and in prior meetings, we heard from the public who are not terribly impressed with Cole Pro Media. And, uh, huh, um, I'm still trying to process. What, what does that mean? Whether that money would be better spent. I, I, in comparison, if I take a look at the two prior city surveys, granted, they were done, uh, mainly to look at revenue. But they had, uh, a, quite a few questions about the overall city performance. And the questions were, so some of the questions were similar, but many were not. And I would really encourage council members to go back and take a look at the last two surveys, uh, that I, that I sent you because they were done, um, uh, by a professional, um, I guess as a survey company. Uh, Lou and, is it Lou Edwards Associates, Mr. Harvey? Was that, do you recall?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I could just point out an important distinction. So, yes, the, the city has contracted with professional polling companies in the past, which would be very different than what Cole Pro Media does. Cole Pro Media is not a polling company. Um, they're a, you know, a transparency communication advisory firm. And so, surveys and polling is not, they're a cold business. This was just core business, rather. This was just simply a component that they, that they believe we should use just to find out where, where we might stand. Um, but they're, but they're not trying to represent themselves as a polling company like Lou Edwards or some of these other, uh, polling firms.
All right, thank you. And I think that's a very important distinction to make because I just heard from two council members. And, and I agree. It's like, well, uh, how, how do we know that uh, the survey results, how representative or how accurate they are? And the, the polling companies and the, the poll, prior polling results do have accuracies uh, associated, uh, with, with those. They go out and, and solicit people as opposed to, I think this one's more of a passive, like, hey, here's the survey on the web and any, and anybody that, that hears about it and wants to respond, responds where the, I believe the polling company goes out and proactively selects people to, uh, to provide input. So, so if we're gonna spend more time, I'm doing more surveys, I'm, I'm not sure this is the right vehicle, quite frankly, um, given that, uh, there's the concern from council members about the, uh, the ability of these, these results. However, uh, having said that, this, these results are, are, um, important and I, and they're not to be dismissed. And I think, you know, we've seen the, the survey results, the long questions, the analysis, we've heard from, from the public tonight and council members, I'd say all those observations are absolutely, absolutely correct. And I don't discount any of this information. The question is, you know, how can we use this to, to do better? I believe that, that is why we're asking this. And, and this survey, uh, differed from poll results that we asked questions about specific departments. And yes, it noted fire department and library departments at the top and city managers at the bottom. But I will agree that, that we don't know, um, specifically what, uh, what we need to do to improve. But I think it pretty much starts with communication and transparency. And those were my two big takeaways from, from this whole exercise. And I think if we're gonna do this again, I, I definitely get some council members together and let's get some agreement on what kind of survey or poll uh, we really want to do and what we're gonna try to achieve. Anyhow, my thoughts. There's no action item on this. Counselor member Smith, you had your hand up for a while. Okay.
Your Honor, I, I just wanted to, uh, echo your comments. I think they're right on, right on track, um. And you said it better than I did earlier, um, that that scientifically, you know, the polling is much more accurate and, and I think that that's a, a tool from the past that we've used and it, you know, you get the charts and it's like, you only get one option. You get to, you make your, your selection and and then it's more statistically significant. And the polling manner in which the poll, creates accuracy, with, with more statistical accuracy. So, I just agree with you. Thank you.
All right. And that's not to discount the, the survey results we got, got today.
No, 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 Your Honor. No, not at all. Just, just something a little more, uh, you know, focused, uh, on what, you know, what, where the community is at. But the feedback that I, I took very seriously and, and a lot of it was right on point. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, we'll now, uh, move on to the next item. It's, uh, goal setting and it's my item and I will be mercifully brief. And, uh, let's see. Um, I'll, uh, lean on our, uh, city clerk. Could you bring up the slides, please? Yeah, next. Next slide, please. Okay, so I, I just posed a number of questions about, you know, what is a goal? I went back and I looked at the last two times we did this and, um, asking questions. Can we define the goal? Do we understand what the goal should be or what is, what should a good goal, um, look like? Should they be measurable? Should, should they include business as usual? Are some goals higher priority than others? Next slide. And along the similar, uh, vein, what about tactics? Are they actions? Should they have metrics? Do they have, to have owners? Should they be completed at the end of this goal-setting cycle, which is the end of 2022? And should we solicit, uh, staff feedback on tactics? This was a question I posed to our city manager. Of course, he liked this idea a whole lot. Yeah. If we're assigning tactics to city staff, should we ask them whether they're doable or not? Yeah. Should we be assigning resources, money, time? Next slide. Okay, so, I, I posed this as a subcommittee on fishing for a volunteer or two, to, uh, to start off our workshop next week with some thoughts on these types of questions, some guidance. Next slide, please. That's the end. Told you it would be brief. Do we have any public comment?
I see no hands raised to Mayor Baker.
Counselor member Conner. First one to raise their hand volunteers. Counselor member Tomlinth is, Tomlinth.
Mayor, thank you. I was actually raising my hand just to say that I think this is a great idea, but I do not have the time in the next seven days to do it. It's just such a short turnaround since we had to continue this item. So, I would have loved to, but I, I can't do it in the next seven days. I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm just kidding.
But I, I, I think it's a great idea and I hope that somebody has the time to, to start us off on the right foot and kind of sync us up for that meeting on the 10th. I am, uh, looking forward to that meeting.
Counselor member Pedori.
Since there are a, a lack of hands, I just raised my hand. I'll take a stab if you want, uh, Mayor.
Good. Excellent. And, uh, this would be a discussion we could do at the very, uh, beginning of the workshop, just to get the the gray matter going. Counselor, did you have any other further comment?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Counselor member McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor, and, um, thank you for bringing this, uh, forward. I know that to have this clarification and for all of us to be on the same page will really be helpful with this exercise, which, um, you know, I think our goals are important, especially, um, as a council and, um, it is, it's very, um, rewarding to see the progress that we have made. Um, unfortunately, time-wise, I'm at capacity. Um, I really wish that I had the time to help. If council member Pedori, you know, needs a, a little assistance, I would be happy, um, to provide that. But I, um, hopefully, I'm, I'm hoping that another council member will step up in that capacity and, and partner with Mr. Pedori.
Counselor member Emilio.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, uh, at capacity too, this, uh, past week, uh, already this forward week, uh. However, I would be free if, uh, with the tongue-in-cheek, uh, Mayor, if I could bring my three grandchildren over to your house.
Bring them on.
Okay. But I would, uh, with, uh, Mr. Pedori will, uh, he's welcome to, maybe we can communicate just talking on the phone. Um, he's got my cell number and, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll assist him that way. Uh, like I said, the next week would might have to be a, uh, early morning or evening phone call. So, I don't know if you're up for that, Chaps?
Yeah, if I may, uh, I think, uh, council member Emilio, you, you have not been frozen for the entire evening, so that's a good sign. Uh, and I think, uh, I'll take you on it, on your offer and we can, we can connect accordingly.
Okay, yes, uh, change in modems.
Counselor member Clowdy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so one week away. Uh, I don't, I don't think there's any problem with saying, hey, you know, there's just not the bandwidth to get there in a week. Uh, and to, um, to put this off, uh, for a little later. You know, I'm the, um, one thing, um, Tom Aikman told me when he, uh, serving on the BNRC. One thing, and I see Jean Anton as a participant, so I'm gonna give her some kudos here. One thing that she, uh, Tom really liked about the way Jean ran the meeting is, and Jean is a teacher. She was my home ec teacher, as a matter of fact. She would give assignments to people. So maybe that's just what we do on this. You know, hey, you're gonna come up with this, you're gonna come up with this, you're gonna come up with that, and then give people time to do it. Because I don't think this is something that one person should handle. This is gonna be a collective, you know, expression of what we think, uh, are important goals and strategies and uh, I'd rather just, uh, be a little more thoughtful about it and get everyone involved than try to rush it. So, that's my two cents. Thank you.
I thank you. I, and hopefully I wasn't, um, unclear. I'm, I'm not suggesting that, uh, council members Pedori and/or Emilio come back with a full set of goals and a full set of tactics. I'm suggesting they help us describe what is, what is a goal and what is a tactic? The nature of a goal and the nature of a tactic. So, so we start off with a common understanding of, you know, what the, the shape of a goal is or a tactic. It's not to come up with a list. Of, here's the answers for, for all of council. Counselor member Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. And, and I took it that way. So I, I think that, um, I mean, granted, I said I, I don't have the time to do it, but I, I don't, if I did have the time, it wouldn't take me days and, and days. Uh, I think that this is, uh, well, from what I remember, the last goal setting, our city manager set the stage. goal setting, our city manager set the stage for us. And he did this. And, and, and so, you know, he can probably help as well to Councilmember Pedori about coming up with it. But it's just sort of going to set the stage when we sit down of like, what are we doing here? Why are we doing this? And so that when the conversation starts flowing, we can come back to that as, as our guidepost of what we're, what we're there to accomplish on February 10. So I think that we, that it can be done in a week.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. So my recollection of the goals process is that, you know, we actually had a chart. And it just, you know, it listed out goals that we either accomplished, didn't accomplish, were in progress, completed, stopped, you know, dead in the water, you know, and most of them were green. Most of them were completed. And so I kind of, that's the way I was thinking about it in my mind, you know, the last four years, just in the two cycles that I was involved in, it was like, these are the goals that we have. And I think, I think what the agenda report suggests is that we should cut deeper on that. But, but I do think that, that they were measurable. I mean, they were measurable before, in the sense that they, we set forth specific tasks and denoted completion thereof or lack of completion thereof, and said reasons for completion or lack of completion were stated within this on, this living document that emanates from the goals meeting. And I remember from two years ago, the discussion about, you know, let's set less goals. These are just general comments, but you know, set an unattainable amount of goals. I think that that is important, actually. And that was actually probably a success on the last run around, because, you know, we were able to accomplish the goals that we set, rather than setting a bunch of goals that you can't actually accomplish. So that's kind of like how I think about it. I don't know if I think about it in the sense of, you know, what is a goal? I haven't given that much thought. But, and I know that we did have tactics or strategies before on how we would approach them. But I would, you know, I would say, my general thought is let's set goals we can actually achieve and try to knock them out. But yeah, that's probably like the old school mentality. So anyway, I'm done.
Councilmember Coletti.
Well, you know, what I was suggesting is that this takes a lot of reflection. And I've been to some of these meetings where there's goal discussions, and it's just a lot of, you know, someone standing at a whiteboard scribbling stuff down. I just, and a lot of the stuff that you have listed on this agenda item, it's more, it's kind of like definitional, which is fine. But that kind of, that takes time to reflect on. I just, I want this to be productive, I guess, is the bottom line. So I'll leave it up to my colleagues to decide how that's best implemented. But, you know, I'll just say this, I think the number one goal for, at least for me, is just competence. You know, doing the work that you need to do to be as competent as you can be. And everything in my mind flows from that. But I'm happy to hear other people's thoughts.
Councilmember Pedori.
Yeah, knowing that we're coming close to 10 o'clock, I want to say that like, we, I think the, if you look at even the city survey results, for example, I think what we're really missing is like a baseline. And I think this is what we need to do is for next week, we need to have a baseline that everybody can look at and say, this is what the baseline is. You can pick any kind of goal or any kind of strategy. But you really need a baseline of information to say, this is what it is. And I think we, if we have a, some sort of a document at least in front of us, which says this is the baseline, then I think we can refine that altogether to say, these are the council goals. And I think, next week is fine. I can come up with that baseline.
All right, there's no, oh, Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just wondering, do we need a motion on this? Or no, great. Okay.
No. But we'll have a discussion, sort of a preamble on goal setting before we actually launch into goals. And I'm sure Mr. Harvey will come armed with some ideas on how we can be productive and get through that exercise. We've done it before. We've been there before. Okay. It is nearly 10 o'clock. I've got three minutes before. So I'm going to ask for a motion for whether, what items on this agenda we want to hear tonight, or which items to continue to the next regular meeting, which would be February 17. And I'm thinking that we need to do the next one with the appointments to boards, committees, and commissions, because they're starting to meet next week. And the other two items, the cannabis framework discussion and the ex parte contact rules, we could defer. That's my thoughts. Anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we hear the item of the boards and commissions and continue to the next meeting, the other two items, as well as the presentation.
Second. May we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Tomlinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Pedori?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero to continue. Pass ten with item 13 F only, and the remaining items continued to the February 17 meeting.
All right, Ms. Kendell, would you help me with slides for the, for the next agenda item?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Advance one slide. Thank you very much. So in general, boards, commissions, and committees, they play important roles in our city government. And besides playing that role, they also provide opportunities for residents to become engaged in local government and improve local government. Doesn't require as many meetings and time as running for council. The, the process for appointments are, is fairly simple. They're identified in Charter, Article 26, the mayor appoints, and the council confirms. And further policy can be found in the municipal code 3.02 and policy triple O five. Next, please. Committee terms are four years for the charter, boards and commissions, and two years for non-charter boards, committees, and commissions. And terms, terms create opportunities for others to serve, and they provide alternative perspectives with different people. We're very fortunate to have many highly qualified and talented residents volunteering for city committees, boards, and commissions. Next. And as I think you all know, for some committees, there are more applicants than there are openings on the committee. And the converse is also true. So as a result, it's not possible to appoint all the highly qualified individuals that have stepped up. And some committees will continue with some vacancies. Next. So how does the appointment process work? At least, I'll only speak for myself. I glean information from many sources, obviously from the applications people have filled out and resumes submitted, from my own personal contacts with the individuals and observations of if they've been in a public arena or have served before. I've gotten feedback from everywhere, from council members, from city staff, from other city volunteers and the public. And I've taken into consideration the committee's mission, specific mission and its role and its ability to represent the entire community, which would be the views of the entire community. Next. And I'd just like to take a moment to thank all the applicants who have volunteered, have stepped up, at least to volunteer, to step up and, and help and participate in local government. It's absolutely important keystone of making this work, and it's very much appreciated. The end. So now we'll go out for public comment.
Lisa Chiani, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Here, am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I'm really glad to see this item on the regular agenda. People volunteering for these positions deserve recognition for their willingness to contribute to the community in this way. And I appreciate Mayor Peak's transparency and, and appreciation descriptions of the process he went through. That's, that's all very good for, for all of us to hear. It's impressive to see all the citizens who've stepped up to take on the considerable work that's involved in serving on a city board or commission or committee. The individuals listed in the agenda report have an impressive array of skills that will be a great resource in their positions and to their fellow board members. It's great to see both new faces, or at least new names, volunteering for a position, as well as experienced board members who are volunteering their skills and experience in, in new positions. So thank you for this night. I certainly hope all the appointments will be confirmed. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further public comment?
Yes, Mayor Inga Lawrence and Joymer, you have the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you, Sandra. Mayor Peak, I think they're excellent choices. I think the process has been followed, except for this confirming by the city council. And I encourage you to just ratify the mayor's excellent choices and process. That is what's worked in Pacific Grove, and that's what should continue. So I thank you very much and encourage you to just confirm his appointments. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no other hands raised, Mayor.
All right, we'll bring it back to council. Councilmember Tomlinson.
Thank you, Mayor. And I too think this, you know, these boards and commissions are, you know, a lot of our lifeblood and the volunteers, they, they spend a lot of hours and a lot of time doing really great work for our city. And I appreciate all of the people who, you know, resubmitted, maybe it's their first time. And maybe it's, they're coming back with the experience that they have, and they're going to continue, you know, to train the new people and bring that experience back. I personally, tonight, will not be able to confer, I think is the word, or confirm this list. Ninety-nine percent of it is, it works for me. But we have two members of, of our volunteer force here who have asked to continue. They have not exceeded their term limits, and they are being dismissed. They're being removed. And, you know, we talk a lot about diversity and inclusion and transparency. And all I can come up with is, you know, I volunteer at my kid's school. And if I volunteer at the bake sale, and I'm doing a decent job, and all of a sudden someone says to me, you know, we don't really want you to come volunteer here anymore. Maybe you can go volunteer at the car wash, or at the next, just don't come back. I don't want to treat our people that way. And I feel like that is maybe unwillingly, that is what's happening to two of our citizens. And it's not inclusive. We have a removal process. And if, if council members or, or, you know, staff has concerns about people who are serving in these volunteer capacities, and they're not carrying their load, they're not showing up to meetings, they're not doing the right thing in their position, then it's in our handbook of how to come to a vote with, by council and ask them to step down. So we can replace them with someone who would do the, the job better. The other part is, I think, asking people to return. You know, I've heard an argument of, of making room for new folks. And the term limits will, will do that. It makes room for new folks. We have vacancies. So it's another, you know, thing I don't feel comfortable with in inclusionary to say, you can't come serve on this board when we have vacancies. So if we're trying to make room for somebody's first time, maybe encourage them to start out in a vacant role. And another thought is, we, we, a lot of us, I personally didn't start on a board or commission, but many of the council members, that's where they get their start in civic involvement. They go to these boards and the commissions, and they need to have these experiences and not just be dismissed. What if these are our future council members who are going to run and run an election and serve on council? So, you know, if, if they're not carrying their load and not doing a good job, I think we need to follow what our handbook tells us to do. And if they, if they reapply, you know, I'm not in the business of telling someone who's volunteering, you can't volunteer here anymore. That's, it's not inclusionary. And so that, for those two folks, that I, when I went, and maybe I'm wrong, but when I went through all the data, there's, there's two people that that's happening to. So if we can change that, then I would be happy to confirm the list. That's, that's my thought on this.
Councilmember McAdams.
Thank you, Mayor. With regards to our handbook, a removal of a board or a commissioner, that is referencing if there is an issue. It has nothing to do with if they're reapplying and they don't get reappointed. It would be during their actual term. So I think that, you know, this is the mayor's team, and he's picking his teammates. And, you know, typically, this is on consent agenda. I actually do really like that it, that it was in the regular meeting. And I appreciated the transparency and learning more about the process. So I'm ready to make a motion. So I move to approve the appointments to the city boards, committees, and commissions as listed below and appointed by the mayor.
Second. Councilmember Coletti.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few thoughts I want to share on this, because I did, I did look at, into this pretty, pretty extensively, kind of, so, you know, one of the powers at, in, into this pretty, uh, pretty extensively, kind of, uh, so, you know, one of the powers unique to the mayor is the ability to make appointments that he or she feels best serves the needs of, uh, the city. That is a unique power that the mayor alone has, is the power of appointment, and that's codified in our municipal code, as well as in our charter. So it's, the, the handbook is not germane here, it doesn't, it's not the authoritative reference here, it's our charter and municipal code. And I wanna say, um, you know, the mayor goes to more meetings than anyone I've ever seen, uh, in service, uh, do, he, he goes to every one of them, all of the board meetings. You know, we've got 11 boards, committees, and commissions. He is better versed than anyone in the city on, uh, the capabilities of, uh, of the, of the boards, committees, and commissions, and, and who, who should be chosen at a particular time. And again, this just gets back to chain of command, you know, I've heard chain of command mentioned a few times, well, the chain of command here is that the mayor appoints, and then we confirm. Um, and, you know, as far as term limits go, you know, on the plan, on our charter, uh, uh, committees and boards, you know, that can be up to 12 years, so, you know, sometimes there just has to be turnover. You may not reach the end of your term limit, 12 years in the case of a, a charter board or committee, but that's fine. Uh, that's, that's just natural turnover, and I, uh, I've reviewed the list, I fully support it, and I do appreciate how the, the mayor reached out to all of us, uh, during this, uh, this appointment process, so I thank him for that, and I'm ready to approve for sure. Thank you.
Councilmember Pedori.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I, I, um, I, um, kind of echo, like, uh, all council members' thoughts here, uh, so I do agree that, uh, Councilmember Tomlinson, uh, she raised, uh, some important points. Uh, I think coming new to the table here, I, I do, I mean, in the spirit of transparency, which is what we've been hearing as well, uh, I, I think it's reasonable to, um, I mean, I'm just picturing myself as somebody volunteering for four years and then, uh, not getting a chance to get reappointed again. Uh, so it is a, I would say, uh, an item to note off, uh, to make note of, at least, uh, uh, how we can shape this in the future or make some improvements. Uh, but I feel, uh, having said that, I do understand that there are a number of applications, a number of applicants, uh, and, uh, there is a lot of review process that is going on, um, so, uh, I do commend you for, uh, taking the time to go through all of them, uh, and making the decision that you have. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, this is not something typically I would oppose, uh, because I, you know, I believe our mayor makes a lot of great decisions and, and has the best interest of the city at heart. Um, just, but the only reason that I, in this case, won't vote to confirm is that, um, I feel that most of the appointments are 100%, but if, if the, uh, person is willing to continue to serve, and they've done a reasonably good job, I think, yeah, I mean, it's, it's good to keep our volunteers engaged, uh, in the community. Um, I have not reviewed the exact performance of these two folks, but I kinda share the same thoughts as Councilmember Tomlinson on this. Um, I know I'd be really disappointed, you know, if I, if I had been serving and, and continued to serve on the planning commission and then was not re, reappointed, um, that would hurt a little bit, so. Um, and, and I, and I know that probably is kinda how th- those folks feel. Um, just a natural human thing, um, and, and also, you know, if we do have vacancies, people that are interested, you know, could be redirected in that direction. However, you know, I don't wanna get too far into the discretionary part of it, but I'm just not gonna, 'cause that's to the mayor's, uh, purview, but, um, as far as confirmation of it, I just can't support it because of those reasons. And thank you very much, respectfully. Thank you.
Councilmember Emilio.
Thank you, uh, Mayor. Um, there's actually, uh, not a couple, but there's one, uh, that wasn't appointed, and I would, um, recommend to the mayor that in the future, if this, there's several openings still, uh, maybe look at that that way. I mean, you, you, you appoint him, and, uh, but there was, uh, one person that was not, but then that person is, uh, appointed again, which was great, so, uh, I just wanted to make comment on that in the future, look at that.
All right, Ms. Kendell, will you please give us a vote?
Uh, yes, and, and I just wanted to confirm that was Councilmember Coletti who seconded that motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Peak?
Aye.
Councilmember Emilio?
Aye.
Councilmember Coletti?
Aye.
Councilmember McAdams?
Aye.
Councilmember Pedori?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
No.
Councilmember Tomlinson?
No.
Motion carries five two.
Thank you, that brings us to the end of today's agenda. I want to thank everybody, we still have a few attendees, and, and maybe people watching at home, thank you very much for staying with us and participating, please, uh, remain , uh, safe and continue with the safe practices. Meeting adjourned.